Good afternoon. This is the regular city council meeting for April 22, 2025. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, two, three, and one, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please? Do I have to announce Mr. Gutierrez before we do that, by the way?
Mr. Mayor, he needs to make the announcement.
Okay, so Councilmember Gutierrez will be participating remotely due to an illness.
Sorry, Mr. Gutierrez actually, Councilmember Gutierrez actually has to make that announcement himself.
Oh, okay.
He needs to disclose if there's anyone over 18 in the room with him as well.
All righty, very good. So, we're good? Go ahead, Ms. Corn.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
That's all. Apologies, I am not feeling well. I'm feeling very sick. And I'm in my home, in my room. There's no one over the age of 18 with me. And yeah, so I ask to just be able to participate in the meeting virtually for today.
Very good, thank you. And Madam Attorney, that does not take a vote to prove that, does it?
Correct, no vote.
Very good. Then, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Very good. Councilmember Harmon.
Here.
Councilmember Santa Maria.
Here.
Councilmember Sneddon.
Here.
Mayor Protem Friedman is not present. Councilmember Gutierrez.
Present.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
And Mayor Rouse.
Here.
And we have a ceremonial item to read.
Ceremonial item one, National Poetry Month, and appointment of poet laureate George Jattison.
Okay, it's National Poetry Month, appointment of poet laureate George Jattison. Did I get that right? Close. Whereas Santa Barbara is renowned as a beacon of literary arts, whose vibrant community of writers and storytellers inspires connection and compassion among us all. And whereas since its establishment by the U.S. Congress in 1996, National Poetry Month has been celebrated each April to highlight the creative achievements and cultural legacies of poets across our nation. And whereas the city of Santa Barbara established a poet laureate position in 2005 to catalyze civic engagement, encourage community dialogue, and champion poetic expression. And whereas George Jattison, a longtime Santa Barbara resident, is talented poet and respected leader, whose contributions profoundly enrich our literary and culinary communities. And whereas we proudly designate George as Santa Barbara's poet laureate, charging him with ensuring that poetry continues to uplift and unite our residents in partnership with the Office of Arts and Culture, tough time today, and Santa Barbara Public Library. Now therefore, I, Randy Rouse, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Santa Barbara, do hereby declare April 2025 as National Poetry Month in Santa Barbara, and congratulate George Jattison, our newest poet laureate. Congratulations, George.
Thank you, Mrs. Sun. Thank you, Mayor Rouse. Thank you, council. And to my esteemed League of Laureates there on the front bench, thank you all. This poem is called "Santa Barbara, A City Symphony." "Some in town wake in the morning before morning. Work for a day longer than a day, shipping out to the channel, nets trawling for ridgeback shrimp. So sweet, when served peel and eat, you're obliged to suck their heads for the last mighty morsel. Others up that early make the world we casually dirty clean again with that hum of the buffers on schoolroom floors. And then the AM bakers attest to all the international powers of flour. And out of their ovens come crispy conscious donuts to savor, not just devour for sugar, croissants that might make Parisians weep. Mothers of all genders pack lunches their kids might end up trading, but nothing dims parental hope. Teachers too, in stately schools named to honor long-dead presidents, take a last silent moment to summon the serenity of an ocean blue sky. In the miracle hill and dale expanse of Hope Ranch, beauties on horses navigate paths first blazed by those who spoke Barborano, while beaters crawl the twisty turns between gated estates, bringing gardeners, cleaners, carpenters, cooks, to the mansions they burnish brighten, provide heart that turns each house home. At noon, alongside the landmark Spanish Colonial Revival County courthouse, a raucous caucus of car horns consecrate the cranky chants of citizens crowding street corners with signs, expressing the fervent hope their country remains theirs. To further consider the just consent of the governed, let's say this day is a Tuesday. For such afternoons, a wise city council each April recognizes the worth of the word, officially lauds the literary arts, for even if there ain't no money in poetry, it still offers clarity as golden as California sunshine, as life attesting as UC's motto, Fiat Lux. Afternoon is a tribute to institutions, the library assists an immigrant with their rights. A docent at the museum of art encourages visitors to go gaga over Shagal. And in Mission Canyon, an anxious tot pauses the button, making a fake 90-year-old snake rattle. Later, on State Street, taught the one good lesson by the pandemic to be pedestrian only, for cars are basically a mistake. Those who bring us greatness from the ground and sea pitch their colorful canopies, tables laden with little gems, Puntarelle, Rudabega, lunar white carrots, scarlet runner beans, Mercots, pomelos, Utanos, and charomoya, its outside armor hiding a creamy surprise. After work, hikers gasp at the aptness of inspiration point, while sunset sidewise silhouettes surfers conquering the fast and dumpy beach break of the pit. On the cliff above that, the locals insist will always be Wilcox. Dogs dance ecstatic their owners came home from work. We will let everyone have their own joy and privacy for supper. As for me, I'm blessed in a westside Spanish charmer, a native garden for yard, sitting amidst the Anothis, all spring cerulean and lightning alongside a laureate love of my life. The scent of citrus blossoms always suggests oranges and limes for nightcap margaritas. A landmark Norfolk pine sings its stately song in the evening breeze, which on remarkable evenings also offers the wistful hoot of owls. And then a scatter of stars, for the great ocean grants us true evening, every last drop of dark. Thank you."
Hail the laureate.
Everything covered roses. Congratulations.
And can I get a round of applause for the poet laureates that came and sat in for this thing today, please?
Congratulations. We're proud. So, welcome to the ranks of the poet laureate, poet's laureate. And we know you already have a bunch of these on your shelf. This is a writing journal. When the poet laureate gets...
If you'd like to address it in the microphone, we could all hear and then be on television as well, please.
Right. Well, I just want to say, poets laureate are very busy people, and they sometimes forget to write their poems. So, we're giving George a book to remind him, and it has our numbers in the front as a hotline. It has our affection for you, and congratulations, and some poems by each of us. Right, right, right.
Congratulations. I have for you some sweet inspiration. And you can open this. This is more inspiration and something to write those great poems that we're expecting.
And if you can't find a word because it's late and you've had wonderful margaritas, take the magic wand, and this is... This'll bring you the word you're looking for. And on the days where the leaves might be just a little bit too much, I was wondering if you wouldn't wear your Santa Barbara poet laureate cap.
Thank you, everyone.
Congratulations, George. As all the talent leaves the room, move on to... Madam Administrator, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No, Mayor, not that I'm aware of.
All right, very good. Madam Clerk, do you have some items to read on the consent calendar?
I do. Item three, introduction of ordinance approving a third amendment to the solar fault of a photovoltaic power purchase agreement with Action Energy to add rooftop solar to 117 Harbor Way. Ordinance introduction and agreement, recommendation in the council, A, introduced and subsequently adopted by reading of title only, an ordinance for the council of the city of Santa Barbara approving and authorizing the sustainability and resilience director to execute a third amendment to the power purchase agreement with Action Energy to add 117 Harbor Way to the properties subject to the agreement. Item four, proposed assignment of lease agreement number 24741 Shoreline Beach Cafe, located at 801 Shoreline Drive. Ordinance introduction agreement, recommendation the council introduced and subsequently adopted by reading of title only, an ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara authorizing the waterfront director to execute the assignment of lease agreement number 24741 from Mr. Stephen Marsh DBA Beach Rock Inc. to Mr. Oliver Pilhar DBA Palenka LLC for the Shoreline Beach Cafe, located at 801 Shoreline Drive, commencing upon the effective date of the enabling ordinance. Item five, acceptance and appropriation of air pollution control district grant funds to purchase electric dolly, resolution. Recommendation the council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara accepting grant funds and amending resolution number 24066, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2025 to appropriate grant funds for the purchase of an electric dolly. Item six, update membership for the Santa Barbara Youth Council, resolution. Recommendation the council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara amending resolution number 12018 to update membership for the Santa Barbara Youth Council. Item seven, approving the management performance and compensation plan, resolution. Recommendation the council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara adopting the management performance and compensation plan applicable to certain unrepresented safety, non-safety managers, and professional attorneys. Item eight, amendment to position salary control, resolution 25035, with updates to classification and compensation for certain positions, resolution. Recommendation the council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara amending resolution number 25035, the position salary control resolution for fiscal year 2025, to amend the established salary for positions as listed effective April 5, 2025. And that is all for consent.
Okay, very good. And are there any items that anybody from council needs to pull off for discussion? And are there any public commenters online that wish to pull something off?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Santa Maria, I believe, will be recusing from item seven. So, if she could make that announcement. She does not need to leave the dais, however.
Okay, very good.
Okay, great, yes. I just wanted to put on the record that I will be recusing myself from item seven to avoid any potential conflicts of interest.
Okay, very good. So, we'll take that one separately?
And we have one raised hand from Natasha Torodovik. I will unmute Natasha Torodovik for a moment to ask which item. Natasha Torodovik, which item do you wish to speak on?
I'm not speaking on any items on the calendar today.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, so she'll be... General public comment, then. Well, that'll be in just a few minutes. All right, with that, very good. I will entertain a motion on everything except for item seven on the agenda. Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. I'd like to move all consent items absent item seven for consent.
Okay. First by Sneddon. Second by Councilmember Harmon. May we have the roll call vote, please?
Yes, this is a motion for the entirety of consent except for item seven. Motion by Councilmember Sneddon, seconded by Councilmember Harmon. And these will be all roll call voice votes today. Okay, so Councilmember Harmon.
Yes.
Councilmember Santa Maria.
Yes.
Councilmember Sneddon.
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman is not present. Councilmember Gutierrez.
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan.
Yes.
And Mayor Rouse.
Hi. All right, very good. Motion passes, and we'll take item seven. We have a motion for item seven, please.
You can sit down.
Yeah. Motion by...
I'll make the motion.
Oh, motion by Gutierrez.
Second.
Second by Sneddon. We have the roll call vote, please.
Very good. This is a motion for item seven. Motion by Councilmember Gutierrez, seconded by Councilmember Sneddon. Councilmember Harmon.
Yes.
Councilmembers Santa Maria not participating. Abstained. Councilmember Sneddon.
Yes.
Councilmember Friedman not present. Councilmember Gutierrez.
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan. And Mayor Rouse.
Hi. Okay, thank you very much. That closes consent items. We'll take now a report from the Finance Committee. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee met this afternoon, and we heard a report discussing the general fund multi-year forecast independent review, and some very interesting and positive feedback about the work we do making assumptions about what we will be facing budgetarily in the weeks, months, and years ahead.
All right, thank you very much. And with that, we'll go to general public comment. And this is three minutes at the dais for anything that is not on today's agenda, but is within the purview of this body. And this'll be three minutes. We'll start with Joseph Bottoms.
Thank you. Tuesday, April 22, 2025, Santa Barbara City Hall. Mr. Mayor, city council members, those in attendance, and on Channel 18. My name, Joseph Bottoms. My game, one of the 13 students enrolled in the Community Environmental Council's Climate Steward Program offered through the University of California Agriculture and Natural Resources Department. We started our first class on Wednesday, April 16, the first day of International Earth Week, with Earth Day flags on State Street hoisted and unfurled. And here we are, seven days later, International Earth Day. Fifty-five years ago, a senator from Wisconsin, Gaylord Nelson, established the first environmental teach-in, now known as Earth Day. And he selected Wednesday, April 22, 1970, midweek, for its spring debut. Senator Nelson knew the importance of all college, university students, teachers, and staff participation in the sit-in, teach-in. Wedged between spring finals and spring break, can you imagine? What he did not know was that over 20 million other citizens would also join in the teach-in. To this day, still the largest organically organized protest in the United States of America, schools, businesses, families, small and large city and state governments got involved. Both the House and Senate in Washington, D.C., sent politicians home to listen to their constituents' environmental concerns. Three months earlier, on Tuesday, January 20, 1970, soon-to-be Senator Representative John V. Tunney read the following into the congressional record in the House of Representatives, the Senate concurring, quote, "Mr. Speaker, one of the most critical threats to our environment is the continued dispoliation of ocean waters, shorelines, and marine life caused by ill-planned offshore oil drilling. Nowhere has this tragedy been more in evidence than within my home state, California, in Santa Barbara," end quote. He introduced and read the Santa Barbara Declaration of Environmental Rights, written by Dr. Roderick Nash, professor emeritus of history and environmental studies at UCSB. The tragedy Tunney spoke of was the Sunday, January 28, 1969, blowout under Platform A in the Santa Barbara Channel. This environmental crisis birthed Santa Barbara's Get Oil Out, Santa Barbara's Declaration of Environmental Rights, Santa Barbara's Ecology Center, Santa Barbara's Community Environmental Council, Santa Barbara's Environmental Defense Center, and did I mention this weekend's Earth Day Festival? See you there. But importantly, it established our modern environmental movement in the world, as it influenced, plus 19 acts of environmental rights and protections, and the recognition of a new beginning. This is from Santa Barbara's Declaration of Environmental Rights. Nash concludes, quote, "We therefore resolve to act. We propose a revolution in conduct toward an environment which is rising in revolt against us. Granted that ideas and institutions long established are not easily changed. Yet, today is the first day of the rest of our life on the planet. We will begin anew."
Thank you. William Prince.
Yen Espando? No?
It's all... It's automatic. There we go.
A short musical?
Not today, but thanks. Mr. William Prince.
Good afternoon. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. My name's William Prince. I've been a resident of the city 50 years. I live in La Mesa. And I came down to Delegara Plaza last Saturday, a couple of days ago. Noticed, typical day, there wasn't anybody in the plaza to speak of except myself and one or two other people. And I... Think of Delegara Plaza as a town hall. Excuse me, as a town green, if you will. And I was reminded that 250 years ago, nearly 250 years ago, 70 patriots faced down 700 British regulars on Lexington Green. I had the good fortune of spending my childhood years in Lexington, Massachusetts, and it influenced the rest of my life. And so, what I'm here for is to remind everybody that the start of the American Revolution in Lexington and the war itself brought us all these liberties that we now enjoy. Never before, in my lifetime, maybe in American history, have our liberties been so challenged. So, I'm asking that every city council and every county council across the land start to recognize April 19, the shot heard around the world on Lexington Green, be recognized in some fashion, and particularly on our green, our downtown green. in some fashion, and particularly on our green, our downtown green. It would be appropriate. I know we have a long and steep history in Santa Barbara, and I've been to Andalucia, I've been to Malaga, and it's a beautiful history. But I would like, rather than just the Fourth of July, I would like all cities and counties to recognize in some fashion April 19, the start of the American Revolution. And I'll leave it to you. Maybe I'll send you emails with suggestions, but I'll leave it to you to figure out what would be appropriate to recognize that incredible, important day in American history. Thank you.
Thank you. Jacquelinda.
Mayor, council, my name is Jacquelinda. I am here on behalf of Casa de la Raza. I'm here to give you an update of what has been going on in our city with regards to Immigration Customs Enforcement. Casa has been diligently working with partners to try to get enough resources around our community. We've now partnered with the Legal Aid Foundation, who provides migrant rights, legal consulting at La Casa de la Raza. We also are starting a mental wellness clinic for Fridays at Casa where people can do individual one-on-ones with MFTs, group treatment, and also support groups for families. It's important for us to know that our community is rallying around our migrant families on folks that are scared to lose loved ones. And although we've had a quiet couple of weeks, we know that there is much to come in the next four years. So here's an ask, an ask from Casa, from our partners and our organizations. As we start to look at policy, we would like to ask that the city council create an ad hoc committee or work with Casa in a more strategic way to be able to organize policy and resolutions, also actions maybe within the budget, that can help support, educate our community, not only on knowing their rights, but also getting information disseminated properly to both our migrant community and our allies. Because there's so much information and misinformation out in the community that it's hard to keep track of what's really going on in our local environment. So we ask that you consider looking at ways for us to partner so that we can properly educate both our allies and our general community at large in regards to how things are being implemented in our community, who is doing what, and what kind of services we're all rallying around. Again, it's also very important, as times change within the next four years, that we continue that partnership in educating folks about the different strategies that we are implementing, that our community is implementing, to be able to provide the right and most accurate information to everybody in this region. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any public speakers online? Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, one public speaker, Natasha Torodovick. Natasha Torodovick, please go ahead.
Thank you. This was an inspiring beginning. Poet laureates, Earth Day, super cool. A couple of weeks ago, I was told that the city attorney has advised council members not to meet with constituents in case of upcoming appeals. While the need for neutrality and fairness during a quasi-judicial proceeding is clear, this blanket prohibition on meeting with the public is chilling. It undermines the basic principles of transparency, openness, and public participation that's foundational to local government. Constituents do have the right to petition their elected representatives and to share our concerns about matters that affect our homes, our families, our lives, and our neighborhoods. And as I've been canvassing my neighborhood, I've heard things like, "I'd like to help, but I'm afraid of retaliation. I work for the city." Oh, our nonprofit might be impacted because we're funded by the city, so we have to keep silent. Refusing to meet with constituents prior to an appeal crushes public input. It exacerbates feelings of distrust in the process. This distancing could in and of itself raise legal concerns about the fairness of proceedings. So here's what I believe. I believe council members are quite capable of receiving information while preserving their neutrality. I believe our elected officials are fully capable of basing their decisions solely on the matters at hand that are for the greater good of our community without this legal attempt at sidelining their constituents. And I also believe that these missteps come from a tense, overburdened, overwhelmed situation that city staff on hair-trigger alert and hypervigilant is trying to navigate. And you have my sympathies for that. Respectfully, I'd like to request that council reaffirm its commitment to public participation by allowing for appropriate, transparent engagement with community members outside of the formal hearing. Public trust in the appeal process depends on it.
All right, thank you very much. Are there further public speakers online?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, very good. With that, we'll close public comment. We'll go to council member committee assignment reports. Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. Water Commission, on the 17th, they heard issues on adaptive reuse projects for water metering. That item was unanimously recommended to move on, and it'll be coming to planning commission May 8, and then to city council later for adoption. And they also heard items on retroactive billing situations that would go to a city administrator for approval, and they approved both of those recommendations.
Are there further council member committee assignment reports? Nobody's hand raised online?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much. I met with the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments. We talked about what we always talk about is financing of the federal government as well as our state government. And he had a report that our highway plans are still in line for approval, so hopefully by January 6, we will hear the final dispensation of those final highway funds for 4E North, which is going to be the area right around Cabrillo and the freeway. That will be exciting. All right, with that, we'll move on to, we're a little bit early for the item 13, so Madam Administrator, can we move to 14 for right now?
That would be my recommendation, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you read that into the record, please?
Yes, item 14, appointment of vice chair for ordinance committee, finance committee, sustainability committee, and legislative committee, and confirmation of legislative committee chair.
All right, very good. With that, I will open up nominations for the, well, it's going to be first, the vice chair for the ordinance committee. Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. I was just going to make a general comment that as all of these committees are rotating positions, that maybe it would be whoever is next in line across these committees be named as vice chair so that the order of succession is clear. But I can make it one by one.
Right. I just, I think we're worried about in situations like where we have appances and whatnot, that we have somebody to stand in. So with that, see the, the chair of ordinance right now is...
I'm the chair of ordinance, and then I would nominate, is it Mike Jordan or is it Oscar? Oscar Gutierrez would be the next chair, so I would nominate him as vice chair.
All right, very good. And Madam Clerk, how do you want to, are we doing this by motion and vote, or can we just, how do we have to do this particular assignment? Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So since all votes today are roll call votes, unless you do it by affirmation, but I still would suggest we have a roll call vote, at least at the end to confirm. If you do them by affirmation one at a time, then have a roll call vote at the end to confirm.
Okay, so let's do that, then. Let's, all in favor of Mr. Gutierrez as vice chair.
I'll second that for you, so nobody pops up.
Well, then we'll do a roll call at the very end. Okay, so any objections, any other comments? Okay, by acclamation. Let's move on to the vice chair for the finance committee. The chair is, well, it's Councilmember Friedman.
So I would nominate Megan Harmon as vice chair.
Okay. Megan Harmon as vice chair, standing second there. And that works for everyone? We'll move on to that. Great, thank you. I'll move on to sustainability committee. I don't even know who the chair of that is.
Yes. Though it's awkward, I'll nominate myself as the next in rotation to be chair next year, so I would be vice chair.
Very good. Sure. All right, was that that second? By acclamation, thank you. I love the way this process works. The ledge committee. Who's the chair of ledge committee?
We just named Megan Harmon as chair of the ledge committee, and I would be next in line, so I would nominate myself as vice chair.
Standing there. Very good. And we had to confirm the legislative committee chair, so.
That would be Megan Harmon as chair.
Okay, very good. And with that, does everybody understand the slate of nominees and approved votes? And we have then a roll call, we may have a motion and a second on the entire slate.
I would move the slate.
Second, very good.
Second.
Do we have a third?
And, Mr. Mayor, do we have a secondor for the motion to confirm Councilmember Harmon as the chair of legislative committee?
Jordan.
Mr. Jordan, very good. Okay. This is a motion by Councilmember Sneddon, seconded by Councilmember Jordan, to confirm Councilmember Gutierrez as the vice chair for ordinance, Councilmember Harmon as the vice chair for finance, Councilmember Sneddon as the vice chair for sustainability, Councilmember Sneddon as the vice chair for legislative, and Councilmember Harmon as the chair for legislative.
And, Mr. Mayor, before you vote, could you please ask for public comment on this?
Okay, is there public comment on this? I do not have a speaker slip. Or is anybody online?
Mr. Mayor, no, there is no public comment online.
All right, very good.
Okay, that is the motion as I announced it, and now I will do a voice roll call vote here. Okay, Councilmember Harmon. Councilmember Santa Maria.
Yes.
Councilmember Sneddon.
Yes.
Councilmember Friedman not present. Councilmember Gutierrez. Councilmember Jordan.
Yes.
And Mayor Rouse.
Hi. All right, very good. Thank you very much. Passes all present unanimously. Very good. Now, Madam Administrator, can we move then to 15? We have about 20 minutes until we're supposed to begin interviews.
Yeah, what I would recommend, Mayor and council, is that we go ahead and do the staff presentation, which I think we can get through, and then if we're close to 3:00, then pause, move to the interviews, and then come back for public comment and council questions and comments, if that works.
Very good. Mr. DiMartini.
Sure, do you want to pull the presentation up? I'm happy to start. Thank you, Mayor Rouse and members of council. It is a pleasure to be here to present my first budget as city administrator. It's been definitely a learning process, as learning the new, the way that we do business here in Santa Barbara. And I, huge kudos to the staff team who has adapted with me, as I have made, I think, some changes to our process and a lot of moving parts this year in the budget. And so, very excited to be here today to present the budget, which I would generally call a status quo budget. We are not, there's some reorganizations, but not a whole lot of programmatic or changes to services in the budget. And I think that's a good thing. One of the benefits is the passage of Measure I last fall, last November, by the voters of Santa Barbara, which enabled us to not have to make further reductions in this year's budget. And so that is, we're really grateful for that. And so, do we want to pause? And, yeah, we don't have a mayor pro tem.
Yes, and as a matter of fact, we don't have a quorum, so we need to pause. Sorry, I didn't notice that right off the bat.
We'll wait a second. Yep. Given we have people online, we have to wait for four people in the room.
We need four people present at the local.
Let's just walk away and stare at each other. I know. Just let us know if anyone needs to leave the room so we can pause. That would be helpful. Thank you all. Okay, we'll restart, and I won't repeat my comments, but I'll just continue and let our finance team do the rest of the presentation. Just again, gratitude for the entire city staff who worked on the preparation of this year's budget, and very happy to walk through this today with the council. So I'll turn it over to Director DiMartini.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council, members of the public. It's all right. My name is Natalia Glusak. I am the budget manager for the city. I have with me today our director, Mr. Keith Martini, and one of our analysts, Ms. Jordan Needle. Today, we would like to go over the, first go over the agenda for the day. First, we'll review the budget processes and where we are today, and some of the modifications in this budget cycle. And then we'll do an overview of the general fund. And then after that, we'll do a quick review of the hearing calendar, and also a demonstration of the online budget book. And then we will open the floor for discussion. So first off, the budget overview. This is a high-level view of the various stages of the budget. Through several iterations, the departments and administration worked collaboratively over the course of a few months towards this recommended budget, which we published publicly last week and we're presenting today. We are now looking for input from council and the public to fine-tune our spending plan for the coming year, with final deliberations and adoption coming in June. We continue to improve the information and usability of our online budget book, which we started putting out in that online form a few years ago, saving a lot of paper and frustration. The improvements include inclusive presentation schedules with meeting dates, presentations, materials, videos. We continue to try and improve our overall accessibility, taking feedback from our various boards, commissions, and the public. And this year, we have added the addition of a landing page for housing and homelessness to see how that works for navigation. Major sections are the budget message, which includes our city administrators' vision of the city for the coming year, with highlights, the strategies, projects, and initiatives. And we also have summary schedules, which show a very high level of things, while the operating budget by department shows each working group's plan within the city with the ability to drill down for further financial detail. Next up, we have an overview of the general fund expenditure by major fund. Again, just as a reminder, the general fund is your public safety and services, so things like police, fire, library, parks, and recreation. You also have your enterprise funds, which function a little bit more businesslike, a little more fee-for-service, so those are things like the airport, waterfront, and your water resources. And then we have other funds, which have specially prescribed spending, so things like Measure C or grant funding would fall under those categories. So every year, we have challenges with the budget. It's not an easy process, and it takes a lot of, lot of work, and I want to take just a minute to commend all of our departments and everybody who had a hand in this. There was, there is an extraordinary amount of work and communication that goes on around this. So our tax revenues have leveled off to a new normal, so while they're more stable, that growth has significantly slowed, and adding in the economic uncertainty that we're facing right now, it's a real challenge to forecast those revenues and also expenditures accurately. We are working with the council and the public to formulate the city's first formal strategic plan, and this process will better focus our budgeting process by aligning the city's efforts towards specific strategic goals. We have recently implemented the Measure I tax incentive, which Mr. DiMartini will talk about in detail momentarily. We are also in the process of completing a long overdue class and compensation study, that implementation of which will take place over the next few fiscal years. And as pension costs continue to increase, we've taken some steps to better manage it, such as starting the 115 Trust Fund, and specifically to meet those costs. Our focus this budget season is on project delivery. We really want to assure that we complete existing projects and priorities before appropriating funds to new ones. And now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. McAdoo to talk about the reorganization of our homeless housing and downtown parking groups.
Thank you, Ms. Glusak. This is, I would say, probably the major change that we are making within the budget this year, but it is really just reorganizing kind of where services are landing within the city organization, and not necessarily adding new positions at this, at this stage. You'll see here two, you'll see organizations, the Department of Community Development, and you'll see the Housing and Human Services Group, and then you'll also see Community Vitality Initiatives, which includes our State Street Master Planning Process, as well as our Ombudsperson Position. And then under Public Works, while their org chart is much larger than this, the area that we are focused on specifically is downtown parking, parking management and operations, as well as downtown plaza support, and the Downtown Ambassador Program. So if we go to the next slide, what we are proposing in this year's budget is that we would add a new Deputy City Administrator, and to offset the costs of that position, holding the Community Development Director position vacant for a period of time during this coming fiscal year, as we assess the success of this new organizational structure. And that Deputy City Administrator would basically oversee the Housing and Human Services, which would also include our homeless service programming, all of our affordable housing programs, the Community Development Block Grant and Community Services Grant, as well as rental housing mediation. And then again, the Community Vitality Initiatives, which include the State Street Master Planning Process, and then Economic Business Assistance, which is our Ombudsperson Position. And then we would move downtown parking and plaza operations and create a new program called Downtown Services, and we'll talk a little bit about that in a second, but the link between Community Vitality, the State Street Master Plan, and sort of the downtown services and programs, was, we thought, very important to sort of link those services together, to have more of a collaborative effort. And then, I think, given the council's priority on housing and homelessness, really elevating it into the City Administrator's office, and creating sort of really actually a focused program on homelessness services, we'll talk, we will talk in more detail as we go through the actual budget hearings on May 6th, but for a number of years, we have been funding our homeless service provider contracts through one-time dollars, mostly through our stimulus, ARPA dollars. And so, in this year's budget, we are actually creating permanent allocations for those contracts, and really creating that actual program within the City Administrator's office. The other thing, and we'll talk about downtown parking in a little bit, for a number of years, the, there had been a number of services that had been shifted to the Parking Fund that had previously been paid for through the General Fund, which was fine when the Parking Fund had lots of dollars, but as we've all seen in the past few years, the Parking, Parking Fund has been upside down, and the General Fund has had to subsidize. So what we've basically done is clean up that, and sort of pull out those services and put them back into the General Fund where they originally lived, and so that funding is getting cleaned up with this budget. So, transportation planning, and transportation sort of administration, and our Safe Streets for All Program, Vision Zero implementation, had been under our Downtown Parking Group. We are leaving that under the Public Works Organization chart, and so just moving the downtown parking piece over into the City Administrator's office. The other piece that I just wanted to highlight, sort of the focus of this new Deputy City Administrator, is really also having more of a strategic look at the city's land holdings and assets, and thinking about how we leverage those going forward, for example, the former police building site, you know, some of our parking lot sites, and how we might leverage those to help meet some of our housing production goals throughout the community. And so, I think that is another sort of reason for the elevated title and role of that position to really lead those, those sort of citywide efforts. So just wanted to really call attention to that, that restructure, so that it was clear what we were planning to do, and then I will, now I will turn it back over to Director DiMartini.
Thank you so much. So the next slide is about Measure I. So the City Administrator's recommended budget does include a comprehensive proposal to implement our new sales tax measure, Measure I, which was approved by the voters back in November of 2024. And Measure I is projected to bring in approximately $15.1 million in fiscal year 2026, and increase to 15 point, about $15.5 million in fiscal year 27. So the recommended budget includes appropriating all of those revenues in both of those fiscal years, and taking into consideration the actual language in the ballot measure itself for maintaining essential services for this community, that was subsequently affirmed by a resolution that the City Council adopted to establish the priorities for Measure I. Staff is proposing how the first two years, the first two full fiscal years of implementation will be, will go. And so, starting at the top, the first section of Measure I-funded programs are, again, to fund existing programs and existing essential services. Starting with the Police Department, Measure I is proposed to fund 34 police officers, full-time, active police officers, three of which were previously frozen and not funded in prior fiscal years to meet expenditure reduction targets. And so, unfreezing those positions, being able to hire, being able to fund police officers going forward. Measure I is proposed to fund 19 firefighters in the Fire Department. It's proposed, proposed to fund eight positions in the Parks and Recreation Department, including adding back prior expenditure reductions for the After-School Program, which was reduced, which had a reduced funding in prior fiscal years to meet expenditure reduction targets, so adding that funding back in. In the Library, Measure I is proposed to fund five librarians, and also including funding for security services and digital collections, which were previously funded through one-time funding sources, such as the American Rescue Plan Act. And so, being able to continue to fund those services with ongoing revenue from Measure I. And then the final existing program is those homeless service contracts that the City Administrator just spoke of. Again, existing funding from one-time sources, we identified a shortfall in those existing homeless service contracts, proposing to fund those five contracts ongoing through the next two years, so that those services are maintained and not reduced. And then on top of that, staff is proposing two new allocations from Measure I. The first one is $1.5 million in each year for housing and homeless services. This would be a transfer of Measure I funds into a separate fund that is completely unrestricted and allowable for the City Council to appropriate for specific uses going forward. And then another transfer of $1.5 million directly into the Local Housing Trust Fund to be used for capital investment in our, in affordable housing projects. So again, staff is proposing this comprehensive Measure I proposal, and again, we look forward to hearing feedback and discussion on this. The next item is downtown parking. The downtown parking staff has been hard at work at developing proposals to implement some improvements in the downtown parking system. This information was presented both Downtown Parking Committee and the Finance Committee over the past couple of weeks, and as the City Administrator indicated, maintaining the core parking functions of the lots and the structures in an enterprise fund, we believe is important. But then pulling out those services that are typically funded through the General Fund into a downtown services program housed within the City Administrator's office. We will eliminate the General Fund subsidy going forward, and those fund, those services will be funded directly by tax dollars in the General Fund directly, and then supporting promenade maintenance, the new DSBIA as well. We are proposing to pause capital spending, and really to focus our efforts on doing a complete needs assessment of all of the downtown parking capital needs broadly, and really understanding what investments we need to make that are more urgent, some that can be pushed out, really having a more strategic lens on our capital investment in the downtown parking organization. A couple of other enhancements that staff are proposing are really around trying to spur a sort of economic activity, to bring people downtown, to keep people downtown, and those include some further discounted employing parking rates for people to park, as well as offering affordable off-street parking for downtown residents who are there. We would like to pilot a pay-by-plate system at the Helena Lot, which is currently sort of out, outside of the parking's purview with pay programs currently. And then, we would like to limit daily courtesy periods to reduce misuse. Unfortunately, there is some misuse with the daily periods, and so really sort of streamlining, limiting, and making that clean. And then finally, staff is proposing to streamline on-street timed parking, which, which again, this is just an overview of some of the downtown parking proposals, we will go into detail in the upcoming budget hearing meeting. Turn it back over to Natalia.
Every year, the departments review and update their performance metrics. These are not just financial, some of these have to do with staffing, quality of workplace, et cetera, and they are monitored ongoing throughout the year. You can find what their metrics are on each of their department pages. The city also has, next slide, please. Next slide. There we go, thank you. The city also has a cost and revenue recovery policy, which it adopted several years ago. This policy serves as a guideline for staff when they are updating the fee schedule. So some examples up there are from the individual benefit would be somebody who is, say, taking a summer camp or a building permit, there's an individual who gets a benefit off that, not the broad community, and so the cost of that will be, of that reimbursement would be concentrated with that individual, so we do look for an 80% to 100% cost recovery on those fees. Going down the list to the bottom, the ones that are more community benefit, so those would be like park maintenance, public safety, those will have a lower cost recovery fee of 0% to 20%, depending on the nature of the service. Next slide, please. The updated annual fee changes can be found on the budget website for review, this is the redlined version showing the old, last year's and current fee schedule with redlines through it for the proposed changes. And now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. DiMartini for the General Fund overview.
Thank you so much, so next slide, please. This is our General Fund multi-year forecast, this is a graph that council has seen over the years. It shows the last six years of actual General Fund revenues and expenditures, what we are projecting in this current fiscal year, fiscal year 2025, our revenues and expenditures for the two budget years that are before you today, and then a forecast going out to fiscal year 2030. We always budget and forecast out at least five years. And what this graph shows is our revenues actually coming really close to our expenditures in the, in this upcoming budget year, proposing a balanced budget in fiscal year 2026. But as you can see, as you go in the out-years, the divergence between our expenditures and the solid red line compared to our revenues and the dotted green line, they do diverge, and that gap widens again in the out-years. This is an indication of our structural sort of budgetary deficit that we've, that we've been grappling with for many years, and you can see that the revenue has jumped up in fiscal year 2026, as we implement the first full year of Measure I sales tax revenues at $15 million. So that is really the largest contributing factor to our revenues bumping up and meeting our expenditure line in fiscal year 2026. I'd also like to mention, at Finance Committee today, we present, we had our independent financial advisors, NHA advisors, present an overview of the recent independent review that they conducted on our General Fund multi-year forecasting processes, and they provided their, their opinion on our, on staff's current processes, indicating that our processes are sound, that we have been implementing best practices, that they have validated and all of the assumptions that staff have built into our forecasting model, and they provided really good input and feedback into our processes going forward. So that's sort of as a point of reference for council as we continue to refine our multi-year forecast. The next slide, please. This shows our revenues and expenditures in the General Fund, again, pointing out that in fiscal year 2026, we are projecting a very small surplus, really the first time in many, many years. Again, the largest and main reason why is because of the first full year of implementation of Measure I, but also the really hard work and diligence of staff over the years of controlling our expenditures with maximizing our revenues from our current revenue sources, really being diligent with our, with our scarce resources. But it is also really important to note that we do have a reserve policy target. That is 25% of our annual operating expenditures. Because our expenditures grow every year, the amount of money we need to keep in reserve will also grow to meet that 25% target, and so that bottom-line reserves to meet the policy target is an additional contribution that we need to make into our reserves. And so, when you take that into consideration, we do show an operating deficit, so it is important for council to sort of know the distinction between just pure revenue versus expenditure, but also our reserve contribution. So the next slide is a summary of our major General Fund revenues, mostly our taxes. Major takeaway here is that we're projecting growth in nearly all of our General Fund revenues. There are a few smaller taxes that we're not projecting growth in, such as cannabis and real property transfer tax, but they're very small, but largely, we're going to experience growth. And another takeaway on this is that the pie chart is very diverse. We are not solely reliant on one or two revenues, we have a diverse set of revenue streams coming in to support our ongoing operations. The next slide shows our major expenditures, again, the vast majority of General Fund tax dollars are spent on people, primarily public safety, which is, represents half of the General Fund, but you can see salaries and benefits make up approximately 2/3 of the entire General Fund budget, with supplies and services and equipment rounding out the rest. The next graph on the next page shows the trend of our General Fund reserves, and so this graph shows the last six years of our ending reserve balances from fiscal year 2019 to fiscal year 2024. There are different types of reserves that we have. The, the big section in blue represents our contingency and our disaster reserves, which, which is that 25% reserve target. But there are a few other smaller reserve categories that we have, primarily attributable to commitments that we make through contractual obligations from a prior year that roll over into the next fiscal year. We have to make sure we have available cash to, to meet those contractual obligations. The percentage on the top of the bar represents the percent change from the prior year, and it also indicates that in four of the last six fiscal years, we've actually been below the reserve policy target. And so, that trend is likely to continue, because if we have operating deficits, as the multi-year forecast indicates, we will likely have reserves that will fall short of the target going forward as well. So again, focusing on meeting our reserve policy targets is always of most importance to staff. And then I'll turn it over to Ms. Glusak.
Thank you. Before you, we have the proposed hearing schedule. As you can see, several dates have already occurred with public hearings for the setting our clean energy rates, drafting our Capital Improvement Plan, also known as the CIP, et cetera. Today, we are at budget introduction, and we shortly will be coming up on a review of our fee schedule with the Finance Committee, and then on May 6, there will be a very impactful meeting where we will review all of the budgets for all of the funds, so that is the entirety of the budget in one meeting, not several meetings, we are streamlining that this year. Then after that, on the 3rd, there will be a council priority setting workshop, this is part of our strategic planning that we are trying to implement at this point. And then there will be a, on the 10th of June, there will be some budget deliberations, and that's for the public's benefit, that is when council gives staff final direction on fine-tuning the budget before adoption on the 17th. So there are many opportunities for the public to engage with the budget, to give public comment, you can also submit emails and other kinds of inquiries to us, if anybody has any questions, please, we welcome those. And now I will turn it over to Ms. Needle to do a brief demonstration of the online budget book. budget book.
Thank you, Ms. Glusak.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm going to be providing a short demonstration about the online budget book through Open So here is our landing page for the Finance Department. Going to navigate to the recommended two-year financial plan for fiscal years 26 and 27. This brings us to the table of contents. At the top, we have our consolidated PDFs, which include PDFs for the budget, the fee schedules, and the capital improvement program. Navigating down, we have the City Administrator's Budget Message, followed by a general fund summary, which I'm going to go ahead and click into. This page provides the multi-year general fund forecast as long, as well as some revenue We also have a new Measure I page, which I'm going to click into, and this includes a Measure I overview, as well as a distribution plan, as Mr. DiMartini mentioned earlier. Moving down the table of contents, we have the Community Profile, we have summary schedules, and as Ms. Glusak mentioned earlier, the Housing and Homelessness page. This page serves as a landing page for all of these programs, including housing and human services, rental housing mediation, and community grants, and it includes links to both the program pages and the budget pages. Continuing down to the table of contents, we have all of the department pages broken out. I'm going to click into the Public Works Summary, which has an overview of the department and a list of all the programs, which you can click on to view more detail. We have the Authorized Positions, followed by the Financial Summary and Detail. Then we get into the Core Performance Measures. And lastly, the New and Improved Org Charts by Department. You also have the ability to click in and view reports, which will take you to the Transparency Portal, which allows you to drill in for more detail as needed. We also have the ability to translate the pages. So up in the right-hand corner, we can change this to any language. And it will translate the page on the spot, including the tables, and it will hold as you navigate throughout the budget book. And with that, I'll pass it back to Mr. DiMartini.
So our recommendations for today are to receive the City Administrator's Recommended Two-Year Financial Plan for Fiscal Years 2026 and 2027, and operating and capital budget for fiscal year 2026, to hear a report from staff in connection with the filing of the fiscal year 2026 budget, and to approve the proposed schedule of council budget review meetings and public hearings related to the operating and capital budget for fiscal year 2026. And with that, we will open it for questions, public comment, and discussion.
And Mayor, per our earlier comment, will pause here and start the advisory group interviews and then come back probably around 3:45 for the public comment and council questions and comments on the item.
Okay, very good. So thank you very much. Good presentation. And we will move to our advisory group interviews, which we have scheduled. Appreciate you guys coming in. Our first interview is scheduled as Sally Foxon for the Neighborhood Advisory Council. And once again, we're going to ask everybody to keep their presentation to three minutes, if you would, please.
I will try my best. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Rouse and council members and all the council members who are not here. I'm Sally Foxon, a native of Santa Barbara, a current member of the Neighborhood Advisory Council, and am seeking reappointment. As background, myself and one other member are the only two original appointees who have consistently served for 14 years on the N A C since its inception in 2011. We hold the history and institutional memory of the N A C, which I believe is an essential asset for the continued success of the N A C. However, the effectiveness of the N A C has been severely hampered by lack of membership and failure to meet quorums, especially since the pandemic. We've had members who serve for a few months or a year and then disappear. I'm here for the long haul, because the N A C is vital for community representation, particularly to underserved communities. And the Lower West Side is one of the most densely populated, yet politically vulnerable neighborhoods in the city, and continues to face numerous charges, or challenges, rather, which include speeding cars that have no regard for other vehicles, people, or pets, lack of adequate and proper street lighting, especially on side streets, food vendors with push carts who walk the streets daily, and whose patrons discard trash on sidewalks, streets, and parkways, yard sales set up on both sidewalks and parkways that block foot traffic, and challenging, quote-unquote, gang graffiti, and the lack of preventative community policing presence in our neighborhood. We need traffic calming solutions on the streets perpendicular to Sampa Squall. We need a double-yellow line repainted on Sampa Squall between Correo and Montecito Streets. There was a double-yellow line, but it was maybe 2019 that it was removed. I asked the city why it wasn't repainted and was told that Sampa Squall is in a neighborhood and kids play there. If you've ever been on Sampa Squall between Correo and Montecito, you know, kids cannot play there. There are dozens of cars, trucks, buses, and commercial vehicles traveling that route daily. During and after the La Malti fire of May 2021, there was an unacceptable lack of communication, response, and accountability to the Lower West Side community. It was not until there was a resident's uproar in the days and weeks that followed that the police and fire commanders came out and spoke with us. Further, our community was given, was only given the option of discussing these concerns at a weeknight town hall meeting at McKinley School, where it was very clear that preferential treatment was given to the Mesa community, and the concerns of those living below the fire were largely dismissed and minimized. So I will finish, and if y'all have questions, please let me know.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for this applicant?
Nope. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Carlos Vasquez. And this is for the Santa Barbara Youth Council.
Right. Hello. My name is Carlos Vasquez, and I am a junior at San Marcos High School. I have been on the Youth Council for the past year and a half, and I'm seeking reappointment as well. And yeah, I'm very excited for the opportunity to serve another term as a part of Youth Council. I've done grant writing to secure youth making change funding for our Youth Speak Out event. At the Youth Speak Out event, I've been the facilitator for the anti-discrimination table for the last two years, and with this topic of anti-discrimination is a particular interest of mine and one that I'd like to continue to promote with my position on the Youth Council. I've also played, I've played a major role in organizing and facilitating the Local Candidates Forum for the 2024 election season, trying to get more youth engaged in that election. And I've also engaged, actively engaged in various events, including Gunlock giveaways, Chunk or Treat, and reviewing and deciding the winner of the Harriet Miller Youth Leadership Award. Outside of the Youth Council, I've also been the president of my class for the last three years. And yeah, and so I'm also, the Youth Council has really opened up my interest in local government and community engagement and the issues facing the youth. And so this has really become a focus of my high school experience. I feel as though I've really dedicated my high school experience to, you know, community engagement and serving the community, and that kind of really all started with the Youth Council. And so I really appreciate that opportunity and that opportunity that Youth Council gives students. And I'm also the, with all the seniors who are on the council this year and who will be leaving next year, I really hope to take a greater role and possibly serve as chair in leading the Youth Council in future endeavors. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions for this applicant?
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pat Wheatley, who I do not see in the audience.
Mr. Mayor?
Was he online?
Pat Wheatley is online and was having some connection issues, so I'd suggest that we hear from Pat Wheatley now.
Very good.
Patricia Wheatley, you can go ahead.
This is Housing Authority, by the way.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor Rouse. I'm saying good morning because I'm in Indonesia. My name is Pat Wheatley, and it is my privilege and honor to be serving on the Commission of the Housing Authority of the City of Santa Barbara. I believe that having safe, truly affordable housing is fundamental to individuals, family, and community health and well-being. A native of Santa Barbara, I have worked professionally in the fields of social service in the community for over 50 years in nonprofit, city, and county governments. As Executive Director of First Five for Santa Barbara County for 14 years, I developed and administered a commission appointed by the Board of Supervisors. In retirement, I have continued to be actively involved in the community, focusing on affordable housing and homelessness. Through my years on the Housing Authority Commission, I have seen the important role of the Commission that it has in supporting and advising the excellent Housing Authority staff and the City Council. We are in a period of extremely uncertain waters, especially with HUD and state funding. There is a significant learning curve in understanding the complexity of developing and maintaining affordable housing in our community. I believe that my experience on the Commission and in the community at large can be of help in navigating these uncertain waters. It will be my privilege and honor to continue serving on the Commission for the Housing Authority for the City of Santa Barbara, and I thank you for your consideration.
Well, thank you. Is there any questions for Wheatley? All right. Thank you very much, Pat. Genevieve Taft, and this is for Neighborhood Advisory Council.
Hi, everyone. I am Genevieve Taft Vasquez, and I'm excited about the opportunity to serve on the Neighborhood Advisory Council. I grew up in Santa Barbara, spent 20 years back east, and then moved back here a few years ago. I always wanted my kids to grow up here, so I feel incredibly grateful and fortunate to be back here. I am heavily involved in the community, mainly at the schools, school level, given that I have three kids spread across different schools. But now that my kids are a little bit older, you just heard from one of them, Carlos, and I've recently taken a step back in terms of some job stuff, I am eager to engage more broadly in the community. So yes, I am willing and able to serve and devote time to this council. I have not attended any of the meetings, but I have read through the meetings, the minute notes, so I am pretty familiar on the scope and kind of the discussion topics. As a parent, some of the key neighborhood topics that I'm particularly interested in is overall safety, but also traffic and road safety. I now have a biker, an e-biker, and a driver in the household, so I am particularly interested in those topics. And also use of communal spaces. I live between Alameda Park and the Rose Garden, and those are really just treasures of our community and really a community melting pot. And so I feel strongly about keeping the upkeep and access to those parks. My professional career has been focused on sustainability topics, so I'm also very interested in fire abatement, water conservation, and recycling as well. And like many of us, I'm also concerned about housing, education, and the future of State Street, but I understand that falls outside of the neighborhood's scope. In terms of the community experience, as I mentioned, I am very involved in, kind of generally speaking, in the community. I serve as co-head of one of the PTAs, assisting treasurer of another, and then very involved in the PTA of a third as well. I volunteer around the community and participate in certain outreach efforts like the point-in-time count. And perhaps a skill or an attribute that I would bring to this is, given my professional career in the private sector, is kind of taking diverse, very diverse, and sometimes not always agreeing viewpoints, trying to move towards consensus, but always with a little practical and what's realistic in mind. So I look forward to hopefully serving on the Neighborhood Advisory Council.
Very good. Any questions for Ms. Taft Vasquez?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Catherine Grifidy, Single Family Design Board. You may feel free to correct me on this pronunciation of your last name.
No problem. I go by Katie, Katie Grifidy. I'm actually seeking reappointment on the Single Family Design Board. I took over somebody else's term about two and a half years ago. Our board, it sounds like similar to a couple of the others, has had consistent challenges with finding board members that serve out full terms, but I actually feel really good about the board we have now. I love serving on Single Family Design Board and take attendance really seriously, especially given some of the corne issues we've had. I've missed two meetings in two and a half years. Both, by the way, were because of weddings on my husband's side of the family, and it's very important that I stay in my in-law's good graces. Don't know if any of you can relate to that. I'm also the only non-architect on the board. There's five of us, and so I kind of consider myself the voice of the public. I went through the S F D B process as a homeowner for three years and also have been a neighbor many times to other homes around me. I live on a flaglot on the Mason. I am in a single-story home surrounded by eight two-story homes, so I think I have a good perspective just from the neighbor point of view on new developments. And then just last thing, so when I first started on the board, I worked in tech in kind of an unrelated field, but two years ago, I started my own landscape design company. Very big pivot, I realize, but I'm able to provide a lot of, hopefully, helpful input when we think about landscaping, using landscaping for privacy and screening, protecting native species and trees, and then just making a project more beautiful. So happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for this candidate? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Joseph Evers, Community Development and Human Services. No? I'm not online, Madam Clerk.
We do not have Joseph Evers online.
Okay. Very good. We are right at his assigned time, so we'll give him a little grace if he walks in. Susan Steinler?
And this applicant indicated they did not wish to interview.
I'm sorry?
This applicant indicated they did not wish to interview. That was the cancellation a little while ago.
Okay, very good. And we had Rumi Jahangir Arshad. And this is also for Santa Barbara Youth Council, and once again, you can feel free to correct my pronunciation.
No, you got it right.
Please go ahead.
Awesome. Hello. My name is Rumi Jahangir Arshad. I'm currently a junior. I'm 16 years old at San Marcos High School. Over the past six months, I've had the opportunity to serve on the Youth Council. I've learned a lot of valuable things about what it means to be a leader within the community, what it means to take initiative, how to reach out, branch out, and understand adversity versus diversity within the community. About the Santa Barbara Youth Council, over the past six months, like I said, I've had the chance to join the Sunshine Subcommittee, which takes part in understanding diversity within people's age range, within their ethnicity, and how we can really exemplify attributes of that that can help them in different ways and celebrate those different attributes. Some experience that I have within the community, within school and outside of school, are president of the Baking Club, vice president of the Chess president of the baking club, vice president of the chess club, president and founder of the San Marcos Science Olympiad team. I also tutor and take rigorous classes. I would like to be appointed to this group because, one, I've had the opportunity to serve on the group, and I understand what it is and the time commitment that it is. I want to make change within my community, and this is the best possible way to do so, in my opinion. The outreach that this group has and the accountability that each of the kids in the group have is remarkable, and I really appreciated the six months that I had and had a lot of fun. I also am currently working on a plan as the part of the Sunshine Committee, in which I would like to outreach to more impoverished neighborhoods and help give art supplies and give baking, baked goods to student, or kids in those communities. And I would really love to stay on the youth council so that I can further plan out my project. As a kid, I didn't have much access to baking, and I really liked baking, as my grandpa was a, grandma was a pastry chef in France, and I didn't have that opportunity to do that, and so I want to give other kids that chance, and so I think that would be great. And I think that's about it.
All right, well, nice job. Is there any questions for this applicant? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. You said that Terry Jory was going to join us. Is she online?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Let's bring her on, please. And this will be for the Mosquito, Vector, and Management District Board.
Very good. Terry Jory, please go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor Rouse and council members. I'm Dr. Terry Jory and seeking the reappointment to the Mosquito and Vector Management District. I've been a trustee with the district since May 2017, when former supervisor Janet Wolf appointed me and then was reappointed by the city since 2019. The Mosquito and Vector Management District is an independent special district providing effective and environmentally compatible management of human health pests, especially mosquitoes, to prevent their public nuisance and prevent outbreaks of vector-borne diseases. The mosquito species collected are analyzed for the presence of arboviruses, including West Nile virus, St. Louis encephalitis virus, and Western Aquinian encephalitis virus. Please note, both St. Louis encephalitis and Western Aquinian encephalitis have never been documented in the county. In March 2025, the district trapped 33 mosquitoes in 12 traps at the Oceana Dunes Recreation Area in San Luis Obispo, which are currently being tested for the presence of arboviruses. For your reference, in 2024, the district conducted 95 mosquito surveys and collected over 17,000 mosquitoes. The success of the district's community outreach and education continues on our website, Facebook, and through mailers, so everybody, please read them, stay up to date, and follow the guidance, because it truly helps. I like to use the example, when the community helped us gain control of the 80s egypti mosquito, when for the first time, the district confirmed the presence of the yellow fever mosquito in the Hope neighborhood and the West Side in 2020. Those mosquitoes tested positive for the West Nile virus in the Hope neighborhood. However, subsequent samples tested negative, and no yellow fever mosquitoes have been found in those areas since May 2021. So we encourage everybody to continue to help fight the bite by remembering the three Ds: dump, discard, and drain stagnant water from items of all kinds around your house and yard. The district participates in the state bird dead surveillance program year-round. In 2025, eight dead birds from Santa Barbara County were reported, and all have tested negative for the presence of West Nile virus antibodies. As a trustee, we also conduct the district's business and investments. The budget for 2025 is $1,500,000. Current investments are $690,000. I request the honor to be reappointed to serve on the Mosquito and Vector Management District. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for this candidate? Thank you so much. And that was a list of scheduled interviewees. Is anybody else that's here for an advisory committee interview? Very good. With that, we will close that.
Mr. Mayor, I do see that Mr. Evers is online.
I'm sorry?
I see that Joe.
Okay.
Thank, thank, I believe Mr. Evers just, just came on. Yes, Mr. Evers, you may go ahead. Joseph Evers, you can unmute yourself and go ahead.
Community Development Human Services.
Hello, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, guys. Sorry, I was having mega problems with Wi-Fi. But yeah, I'm here today to interview for the Community Development Human Services, as well as the Downtown Parking Committee. I'm 24 years young, have never been part of a committee, mainly because I have not lived within the Santa Barbara area, living in Villada. But I'm interested in joining local government because I want to have a say in what's going on around me. My background and experience with, for community development and human services is I would be applying on behalf of the business sector. I run summer camps and after-school programs here in Santa Barbara, and I really want to promote community retention through quality youth programs and programs for our community. And I feel like that the CDHS is the best way to do that. Similarly, I want to join the Downtown Parking Committee because of my fellow community members who are my age are affected by the pricing of that parking we have in all of our parking lots, and I want to be an active voice on behalf of them. My availability is open all the time. As a small business owner, I make my own hours, and I would take this opportunity as a good way to get back to my community.
All right, very good. Thank you. And are there questions for this applicant? All right, thank you very much. And there was no further online, is that correct, Ms. Corwin?
No further hands raised. If anyone who is online is here to interview, please raise your hand in the app now. No further hands, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very good. With that, we will close the item, and we will move on back to questions from council for finance. Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. I do have questions. I've got to switch my brain back here, and I think I'll just go through slides in order. First thing I want to say though is I miss Councilmember Friedman. I know that the budget is really his very exciting thing for him, and I miss his voice today. So questions, starting with, oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay. First question is about the class and comp study. Just general question. So when are we expecting to sort of hear back from that? But also, really, what is our maximum amount that we might need to be kind of holding in, not like real reserve, but in sort of thought reserve for these budgets?
So I think as we had presented to the council when we came in and presented the original, the initial findings from the class and comp study, that the financial implications of that would be determined at the bargaining table. So we are at the table right now with a number of groups, and those, we are for fiscal year '26, including a higher salary increase projection than in future years, which would hopefully account for some of those implementation costs, probably not all of them. So there may, we may have to come back. It is unclear whether we will finish those negotiations by July 1st, which is when the contracts expire. So we will probably have to come back into a budget adjustment for those, those implementation costs.
Thank you. I guess I just want to make it clear that we need to have enough in there to be able to really bring those salaries competitively. And then a question about the Community Development Director position, and I think you mentioned holding it open. I just want to confirm that they would still be keeping our current interim director?
Correct. Yeah, Ms. DeBusk will continue to serve as the interim director. We just wouldn't fill the permanent position for a period of time.
Okay, that sounds good. I was, I was thinking initially it was not to have any, and I thought, well, okay. Glad I clarified on that. And then going to some slides, slides nine and 10. And I appreciate the sort of bold look at how to look at different departments and sort of redistribute around. I just had some specific questions, and I know, I know we will look at downtown parking separately, but some that are on slide nine that aren't on slide 10, and I just want to make sure that I understand where they are. Parking management, PBIA operations, plaza support, and the downtown ambassador program. So I'm guessing those fit under the new downtown services on slide 10, but I just want to be sure I'm not making assumptions.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Sneddon. You would be correct. So the downtown parking, parking management, and PBIA operations are all going into the downtown parking and parking operations. Downtown parking operations will stay in the parking operations. Downtown capital is going into downtown parking maintenance, so there's just a little nomenclature change there. And then plaza support and downtown ambassador program are both going into the new downtown services program.
Thank you. And then I suppose we'll be able to go more into detail on that when that item is heard more in detail, because I guess I'll have questions about downtown services and what it means to have plaza support in the sort of current configurations, and so I'll kind of reserve those questions for later. And then on slide 12, I think that's more of the same. I do think it's a good idea to pause capital until we have a full, comprehensive survey. And again, yeah, I wanted to confirm that we'll be hearing those, but you already confirmed that. And then slide 15 for the fee schedules. Do these take into account what we're anticipating in the nexus study for in lieu fee changes? Or when would we take those into account?
My guess is that probably does not, because I don't believe that study is complete yet. So we would have had to have already published the notice for the fee schedule, so that'll come back as a separate agenda item for council to review and consider.
Yes, if I may follow up on that, Councilmember Sneddon. Anything that is not yet complete, we will come back for a separate amendment on the fee schedule, so there may be some notation about that in the presentations.
Thank you. And then I would make a guess that that amount would just go up, not, that we're not really anticipating that that would be a loss.
I would say that is a likely scenario, yes.
Okay, thank you. And then in slide 21. And I like this slide. I think it's sort of a new way of looking at it, is it? So I was just wondering if you could tell me more about the unassigned category. So that one, of course, like jumps out as above reserve, and so just more about that.
Absolutely, Councilmember Sneddon. So first I'll say is we've revamped and really enhanced how we present reserves. It's really, really important, and we wanted to implement best practices. This, the way that we present it here is how the Government Finance Officers Association, sort of our benchmarking of best practices, and so we want to really implement best practices. Unassigned is really, it's the amount above and beyond the minimum required reserve target level. And so if the required level, let's say, is $40 million, but the ending reserve balance is $42 million, that $2 million is unassigned. And so it's unassigned, it's available, it can be appropriated by city council for a use. It could also be used for future potential reserve shortcomings, right? So it's truly unassigned for other purposes.
And is that the amount of money in the past that we've looked at and as a council decided, how did we want to spend that unassigned? What's the proper terminology? Unassigned surplus?
Unassigned surplus, yeah. Unassigned above and beyond the reserve minimum, yeah. So that's, that's correct, Councilmember Sneddon, it is. Council has taken action in prior years to appropriate surpluses from a prior fiscal year.
Okay. And then it's kind of notable that fiscal year '24, we're not anticipating any of that surplus.
Fiscal year '20, Councilmember Sneddon, fiscal year '24 financial statements are closed. We fell below the reserve policy target. This graph, if you extended it out and projected our reserves, fiscal year '25 is also projecting a deficit. Fiscal year '26, as we just presented, is showing a very small surplus, but again, when you take into consideration the required reserve contribution, we again fall short. So if you were to project out, we are still showing a gap, not meeting the reserve target.
Okay, that, that would be helpful, too. So I really appreciate, I really just really appreciate the iterative process of making this more user-friendly, more transparent, which is always the goal, and congratulations also on the, from the finance committee and the outside verification, really, of the budget practices, and really appreciate that. Just one, one more on that one. So the minimum requirement, that's on this chart, that's our own city council-defined minimum requirement for reserves.
Councilmember Sneddon, that is correct, the 25%.
Okay. And then you sort of blocked out separately on the red, non-spendable being disaster? Or is the blue, the blue is?
Yeah. Councilmember Sneddon, to clarify, the committed, which is that blue section, represents both the 10% contingency and the 15% disaster for the total of 25%. The other smaller sections, the smaller sections, non-spendable, restricted, assigned, those are for really sort of specific contractual obligations that we might have. Let's say you entered into a contract last fiscal year for $1 million, and you only spent $200,000 on it. You have to carry forward $800,000 of appropriation from a, from a prior fiscal year to be able to, to follow through with that contract. That's money that needs to sit in reserve so that you can pay that bill. Those are examples.
Thank you. I guess that raises another question. So that counts toward the 25% policy, or it does not? So in this chart, it kind of looks like it does? It does not? Okay.
Yeah, that, that, those smaller amounts, those sort of contractual obligations would be above and beyond the 10% and the 20, and the 15% required amounts. And so you can see we even fall a little bit shorter then in some of these areas.
That's what I was wondering, too. Okay, so the yellow line, just to be super, super clear, the yellow line is the 10% plus 25%?
Correct.
Only?
Correct.
Okay. And so, I see. I see the blue alone would not be enough. The blue committed would not be enough to meet that reserve target?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An overriding comment or question is, I'm having trouble when I see something I want to hold in my hand, I'm printing out a page, like the executive summary, the message from the city administrator, or if I see a department roll-up that I just want to write a note on and keep with me rather than have to remember a whole bunch of where am I in the phone book to talk about it another time. So is that solvable or not?
Councilmember Jordan, yes, it is solvable, and there's multiple ways that we could address that. First, there is a consolidated PDF of the entire budget, which Ms. Needle pointed to. That is a PDF document that you can save locally on your own computer. You can use the sort of functions within Adobe as necessary. You can print it. It's also, you're also able to print each individual page of the online budget as a separate document. Those are no more than one or two or three pages. And so those are ways to sort of address the, the entire budget being electronic versus being able to print certain pages.
So I guess the problem I'm having is the more graphic-oriented overviews, not the PDF pages, per se, right? So is there, so wherever you were, wherever we started on, on looking online, it was like the, it was like you pulled up a couple of examples and where it's just a webpage, and if I just go up and try and print the webpages, I'm off the margins, I'm losing, I'm losing, the preview I'm getting are, I'm losing graphics, that kind of thing.
Thank you, Councilmember Jordan. That's a very good point, and we are able to produce that page as a PDF for just that page when you print. We can put up a direction page of how to do that, if you want to print a single page instead of the entirety of the budget book. We also have a link to that PDF page, which, to your point, it may be a little difficult to say, hey, this is the page I'm looking at on the internet, and find that in the entire document, but that would be another option.
Whatever you can do to help with that, I'd like, because that's generally, I really want to take pages of notes of, I found this on page 832, and try and remember what that was, I'd rather. was. I'd rather write my note on the page that I can print out and just bring my set of pages with me. Then, on the, on the Downtown Parking slide, um, there's a bullet there halfway down on looking at affordable off-street parking for downtown residents. Can you, do you, the proper people to just ask for an overview question on what that really means?
Thank you, Councilmember Jordan. So one of the tension points of downtown parking is people live there, and also that we have residents who want to come downtown for various reasons, but we don't want that parking fee to be prohibitive or have it be, you know, confusing for them. So we are looking at off-street parking for downtown residents, so where somebody might be out of town for a couple of weeks and they want a little more environmental protection for their car, or if there's a rainstorm coming and they live in a low-lying area or something of this nature, or if they just want to keep their car in a, in a monitored structure instead of leaving it on the street. I'm sure we've all lived in an area where we've seen side-swiping, lost mirrors, other kinds of things that happen when you park on the street. So we're looking for those kinds of solutions to help our residents out and also help out the monetary stream there.
So I'll opine a little bit more into the details. So as we load up on, um, higher-density residential projects in the downtown with no parking, and cross our fingers that that's really not like the death of parking on the street, both where it is available downtown or spreads out into the neighborhood, we're going to take a good look at ways to solve that and looking at like when we have facilities that are, are at a lower occupancy that can be then welcoming to times when the occupancies are not a traditional downtown parking customer but are a neighborhood parker, that kind of thing, right?
And the Downtown Parking team this coming year will be hiring a consultant to help us do a really comprehensive, not just capital assessment, but also services, equipment, the, the sort of, the ticketing and parking payment system, so sort of a very comprehensive look at our overall structure. And I think this is a sort of, you know, we're going to try this out to see if it helps move residents off the streets and into some of the lots and actually encourages permit purchasing. But I think you're correct, as we look at more downtown housing, and I think that's something we'll want to have our consultant take a look at, is what is that projected, looking at the opportunity sites in our housing element, and like what does that do long-term if we, again, sell those permits to downtown residents?
You hear the same tensions I do. I know you do, that we want more housing, we don't want cars, but cars will follow, and what do we do with the people that are down there already being affected? And then somebody mentioned, too, and I know, Kelly, you've been, you've heard this from a couple of us, but you did actually mention, too, we're looking at our surface lots, and I'm assuming that meant that we're finally going to start looking at, uh, use of whether utilized or unutilized super, surface lots, about using the airspace above them while, while maintaining a connection to downtown parking, whereas in Mike Jordan's mind, housing becomes a portfolio asset of downtown parking also.
Correct. And, and that would be, you know, we would look at, we would not sell those lots, but, you know, look at a ground lease situation and build housing above them. And so it would be a way, again, that would create some additional revenue for the Downtown Parking Fund, allow us to do some, and continue to do some of the capital maintenance and sort of be creative in our funding streams.
Perfect. And then I, too, have a couple of questions or comments on that, that Reserve Balance slide 21. So, um, the dark blue is our contingency and disaster 25%. And we have continually, I think in the history of councils, um, staff sets a budget, but things happen during the year, and in particular, I'll just say wages or legal issues as an example. So you set a budget, historically, I just know, I've been, in my time, you've been part of, you were setting budget projections of adding 3% to wages, and council would routinely go, now we want four or five. And so when you do, and another example will be, just something happens in the legal world, and we look up and have to spend hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars that were unanticipated because of a legal issue. When that happens, and it's in a year where you don't have one of those little purples, purple parts on the top of it that's unspecified, where does that money come from out of the reserves?
Councilmember Jordan, first and foremost, staff will do their best to identify, like, existing appropriation to be able to fund that. So for example, if there is maybe attrition savings or like salary savings from a position being vacant, if there's available budget to fund some of those additional cost increases for salaries, or something that's a litigation or a claim that we need to pay, we will do our best to leverage the, that, sort of, those budget line items first. When that isn't enough, we will then need to seek additional funding, which likely will come from reserves, either the General Fund reserves, which is this graph right here. In the case of sort of claims and litigation, potentially the self-insurance fund also, which as of now is also underfunded. And so there's multiple strategies we can implement, but effectively, if we can't find the budget from existing budget sources, we have to dip into reserves.
And when we're saying reserves, we're saying the dark blue contingency or disaster?
Yes. The first one we would dip into is contingency reserve, which is that 10%. Disaster really should only be utilized in the event of a disaster, like a natural disaster, COVID, a major event.
And I don't have it in front of me, but I would also remember that the definition of use of contingency reserves doesn't quite fit the scenario that I just painted, too, when you put a budget together with projected salary increases and council decides they'd like to make it more, that is not an appropriate use by definition of contingency reserves, correct?
Yes, Councilmember Jordan, I believe you are correct. The reserve policy adopted through council resolution does specify the cases where both disaster and contingency reserves are to be utilized. It talks about sort of unknown or sort of unanticipated events that might occur, there is something that we need to respond to. It's very sort of clearly articulated in the reserve policy. And then with that comes the responsibility to define a plan to replenish those reserves when council takes that action.
I think the language is something like not ongoing operational needs of the organization. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay. And so when, and that's a tension or a dynamic that just exists between staff's attempt to project and run a budget and council's political decisions on where to go spend money, right? There's, there's not really any, there's no really control, there's no really good or bad side to that, it's just the way it is. But the consequence of that is we do go into those reserve areas that are normally set aside not for those uses on occasion. Well, in fact, if you look, I would hazard, if you look, other than the 22 and other than the 23, every one of those years, pretty much, we've been into the contingency or the disaster for those type of examples, right?
Councilmember Jordan, that is correct, and just the, the reserve policy is the city council's own policy. And so it's the city council's decision to utilize those reserves as you see fit.
And the, and the example you gave of unfilled positions isn't, I mean, we even have taken that a step further in the past couple of years. We have purposely left positions unfilled in order to avoid going into the reserves, which I think you would agree, just as a professional opinion, is not a sustainable and day-to-day operational good thing, correct?
Councilmember Jordan, yes, I do agree with that. We've had to implement expenditure reductions over the last five years in order to help balance the budget. Those actions were short-term, they were sort of one-time in nature. The, this current fiscal year budget, the expenditure reductions that were implemented, the direction from the city administrator at that time was to have them be permanent. So there were a number of permanent reductions that have, that will be implemented going forward, but largely, those reductions that were taking place in the last couple of years were temporary, one-time in nature.
I think that's all. Good, thanks. So my biggest help on this would be getting to a point where either I can easily find a page I want in the phone book of a PDF, or I can just click on a page that I really like and be able to get that printed on a piece of paper. That would, that would be a great benefit. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Ms. San Maria?
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. First off, I just, I want to thank you all for the incredible work that is going into both the reorganization and, of course, just our, our budget. I have one question that might be two parts. I think this would be more, more for you, Kelly, but for the deputy city administrator position, first off, I think it's a wonderful idea, and I really want to congratulate you on this creativity of, you know, creating this new position, making sure that our, you know, some of the most active topics are consolidated under, under one position. So I would love to hear how, all of these initiatives that would be under the deputy city administrator, first question would be, what, how is the timeline for these projects for Housing and Human Services, State Street Master Plan, Downtown Parking, all of those? How, how are those timelines affected while we're waiting to hire a new deputy city administrator?
Well, there currently are staff managing all of the programs and services within that. So my anticipation is there wouldn't be any real change to the timelines that are currently in effect. This, we just hired the executive recruiter that we, sort of in anticipation that the council would be in agreement with this proposal. Obviously, we wouldn't fill the position until after the budget gets adopted if the council seems supportive of it. But given the timelines, it looks like the position would roughly be on board probably in September timeframe. So this, you know, would go into effect, but the, the staff that are in those positions would continue to work and probably on July 1st would probably report to me in the interim until the deputy comes on board and will continue to push those, we're continuing to push those initiatives forward. I'll be probably a little bit slower, just given the constraints on my time and being able to help move, move those, those items along, but we're trying to move them along as quickly as possible in the interim.
Yeah, that totally makes sense. Thank you. And what is, what is it looking like for the Community Development and Public Works Departments as they are, I guess, as these projects are transitioning out of their departments? Is there any support, additional support staff needs, or how are we looking there?
So each of the, and we'll get into more detail in this on the May 6th meeting, where you'll actually get to see, sort of, and also you can look at the positions that fall within each of these organizations, but they do come with support staff, you know, along with professional staff. So there's, there's sort of, it's like sort of taking that whole organizational structure and relocating it with, within the organization. And so I think we are very thoughtful in talking with the Community Development Team and Public Works Team about making sure that the, what, what staff was relocating to different organizations and making sure that the appropriate support was given to those positions.
Got it. So just for clarification, you're moving over these programs, but also the staff that goes along with it?
Correct.
Okay, that makes a lot more sense. Great. And then you said the position, or you estimate the position roughly filed September of this year or next year?
This year. Uh, September of '25, which, but it would be the-
For the next fiscal year.
Next fiscal year.
Gotcha. Okay, great. I have one more question, one second. Um, actually, no, I think you answered it. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, very good. Madam Clerk, are the, any questions online from council members?
Mr. Mayor, I do not see a raised hand from either council members, Harmon or Gutierrez.
Okay, well, with that, we'll go to public comment on item 15, and we'll start out with Linnea Doubles.
Hello. You said my name right. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Linnea Doubles, and I'm here on behalf of New Beginnings to sincerely thank you for your continued support and funding. Your leadership and investment in our organization is making a meaningful difference in the lives of so many in our community, and we are deeply grateful. New Beginnings is a nonprofit organization that provides psychological counseling and housing assistance services to the homeless, as well as low-income individuals and families through Santa Barbara County. Through our Counseling Center, our Safe Parking Shelter, and Rapid Rehousing Program, our Supportive Services for Veteran Families Program, and our Life Skills Parenting Education Program, we served over 2,000 people last year alone. We are especially gr, most grateful for the city's support this year of our Counseling Center and Safe Parking Program through the Human Services and CDBG Funding Awards. We are also really pleased to see housing as a priority of Measure I. At New Beginnings, we see every day how critical safe, stable housing is, not just for physical security, but for mental and emotional well-being, too. The city's efforts will directly impact our veteran and safe parking housing-related programs and allow us to work more effectively with the city in addressing homelessness. Thank you again for believing in our work and for continued commitment to creating a healthier, more compassionate, and equitable Santa Barbara for all.
Thank you. Amanda Cobb.
My name is Amanda Cobb. I'm here on behalf of Habitat for Humanity of Southern Santa Barbara County. Thank you so much for the opportunity to comment on the city's budget and proposed Measure I allocations. We are incredibly appreciative of the city's, excuse me, efforts to convene stakeholders leading up to this meeting. While there will always be competing community needs, we want to remind you that the funding of affordable housing was one of the top two priority needs, excuse me, sorry, of the city's public outreach on the subsequent and the subsequent Measure I campaign. The proposed $3 million allocated to homelessness and housing represents less than sufficient amount, given the vast affordable housing needs of our community. In the last housing element cycle, we only met 12.6% of our very low and 21.3% of our low-income unit needs. Those needs have doubled, and the production gap continues into the sixth cycle. We therefore strongly encourage you to allocate an additional 1.5 million to build affordable deed-restricted housing that is price-stabilized so that essential workers can live in the community they, they serve. Federal and state funding sources are increasingly uncertain. Cal Home, the only state funding source for the development of affordable housing, was zeroed out this year. Therefore, the city's general fund is Habitat's most significant source of reliable funding for constructing low-income ownership housing. Please follow through on Measure I's promise to meet, to better meet the affordable housing needs of our city and increase the allocation by at least another 1.5 million. Thank you.
Rob Fredericks.
Good afternoon, Mayor Rouse and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. First want to commend city staff, Kelly, Keith, and the Finance Department for their thoughtful and transparent budget presentation. It's very helpful. As you begin your deliberations for the fiscal year 2026 budget, I urge you to recognize the importance of invest, investing in affordable deed-restricted housing. The Housing Authority deeply appreciates the city's longstanding partnership and its six-point, 16.4 million dollar investment in our developments over the past five years, which has not gone unnoticed. Those sources, those are from sources that mandate that funds go to affordable housing. But as your community continues to fall short in meeting housing targets, particularly for low and moderate income households, more must be done. Therefore, I sent you a letter on two key recommendations. First, a recommendation to reduce the reserve policy from 25% to 23%, balancing fiscal prudent with urgent housing needs. I realize with the discussion here today, you know, with the fear of revenues not falling short and expenditures going over, that, that may be a non-starter. The second was ideas using the city's investment portfolio to instead invest a portion of that locally in affordable housing, following the redevelopment agency's loan model of 30-year residual receipts loans for 100% affordable developments. If neither of those, if both of those are non-starters, and we're going to continue to lack in providing deeply critical needed funding, I think we do need to look at possibly another revenue source coming up, maybe increasing TOT for a dedicated funding source that is dedicated to affordable housing, which is definitely a priority here in Santa Barbara. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lizzie Rodriguez.
I'm Lizzie Rodriguez, and I'm here tonight to speak not only about the urgent need for affordable housing in our city, but also about how we can understand this crisis. affordable housing in our city, but also about how we can understand this crisis and how we, as a community, must consciously respond. In honor of Councilmember Friedman, I'm going to frame my comments today through the lens of Paulo Freire's concept of conscientization, or critical consciousness. Freire argued that in order to transform oppressive systems, people must first develop an awareness of social, political, and economic contradictions that shape their lives. In the context of our city's housing crisis, this means recognizing that the lack of affordable housing isn't an accident or an inevitable consequence of growth. It's the product of policies, priorities, and power dynamics that have consistently privileged profit over people. Too often, conversations about affordable housing focus on numbers and zoning regulations without acknowledging the human reality behind those figures. Behind every statistic is a person, a family, a child forced into instability because we have not built a system that prioritizes their right to a safe, affordable place to live. Conscientization demands that we name this for what it truly is: structural injustice. Freire believed that true liberation requires both reflection and action. It's not enough to hold listening sessions or express sympathy for those experiencing housing insecurity. We must take deliberate, bold action to dismantle the barriers that keep affordable housing out of reach for so many in our community. That means passing policies and adopting a budget that ensures affordable units, protecting renters from displacement, and actively redistributing resources that counteract decades of inequity. This is the strong leadership that our community needs. I urge our council to think beyond surface-level responses and towards a deeper, critical engagement with the root causes of our housing crisis. Let's practice critical consciousness as a city, reflecting honestly on how we arrived here and taking courageous, collective action to create a community where housing is treated not as a commodity, but as a moral obligation. Thank you.
Thank you. Rich Albonbaum.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse, members of the City Council. I am speaking on behalf of Clergy and Lady United for Economic Justice, or CLU as you know it. This is an organization of both lay leaders and clergy. And while I will be talking more statistics, which is sort of my role, we bring a strong faith organization to this, and the need to house our citizens, as Lizzie Rodriguez just said, is foremost in my mind. So the first thing I want to do is thank the city staff for its transparency. I've been present at the two meetings so far, and I have to say, my mind was blown by the complexity and the challenges and the trade-offs you face. I'm glad I don't sit in your chair, but I stand here, which means I can really speak my mind. So I do have four suggestions, or reservations, or thoughts. And this sort of builds on what you've already heard and what you're going to hear coming down. First, as you've heard, we have a terrible need for affordable housing. Our sixth RENA cycle calls for 3,500 units to serve very low and low-income households and another 1,400 units for moderate-income households. That's something like 2/3 of our housing needs, little less, about 62% of our housing needs. The market can serve the rest, but these people are not going to be served unless we do something about it. And as you know, the state is now implementing punitive sanctions if we don't meet our RENA requirements. So this is both an ethical and a legal obligation. Second point I want to make is that affordable housing should not get the leftover when all of their needs are met. We really need a long-term plan. Housing should be part of your base budget, including a line item with reliable annual long-term commitments to the local housing trust fund. Third, creating affordable housing for the trust fund is an investment, not a cost. Rob has addressed this, as you know. Funds there can leverage up to 10x, provided there are enough funds there, and we've lost out because we haven't had enough funds. And so finally, and most important, CLU urges you to commit at least $5 million for affordable housing and homeless services in fiscal years '26 and '27. And in my view, that means using all revenues available to you. Rob has spoken about, you know, 2% off of the reserves. I know you have challenges there. Could put $4 million into the trust fund. You really need a plan. Focusing on Measure I is a mistake because it pits many worthy causes against each other. You have to dig deeper than that. You really should and are obligated legally and morally to come up with a long-term solution to this problem. Thank you.
Diane Black.
Mayor Rouse and City Council members, my name is Diane Black, and I'm speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Santa Barbara. First, I want to join in thanking your city administrator and her staff for meeting with a group of housing advocates last Friday to preview the draft budget. We really appreciate the staff for their time, their transparency, and their collaboration. We also appreciate everything, we don't say it often enough, we do appreciate everything that the city has done and is proposing to do, including the budget allocation of $3 million for new housing and homeless services, for funding existing programs, and notably the reorganization to focus on housing programs. These are important and significant commitments. However, given the scale of our local housing crisis and the express intent of Measure I, this is simply not enough. We respectfully request the following: that you allocate an additional $1.5 million in affordable housing, to affordable housing through a modest reduction in the allocation to your reserve. We do not recommend this lightly, but strongly believe that we are in an affordable housing crisis, and it warrants the use of reserves, or would-be reserves. We also ask that you designate any surplus funds at the end of this year, that's how we got this local housing trust fund started, to housing. So if there is a surplus, it would go to housing. Again, affordable housing need is an emergency situation in our community and deserves additional investment and resources as they become available. And I also agree with several of the other speakers that we really do need to come up with a very significant, long-term source of funding for affordable housing, and it's probably not going to be through the funds that are available to the city today. So thank you to you and your staff for the opportunity to meaningfully engage in this budget process.
Okay, Linda Honigman.
I'm waiting for the clock to reset. Dear Mayor Rouse and City Council, I am Linda Honigman, an affordable housing advocate for the South Coast. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on an important component of the city's budget: support for housing and homeless services. I agree with the content of the letters you received from Strong Towns and the city's Housing Authority. I'm also happy to see the new programs and positions for a new deputy city administrator, community grants, and homeless services, as well as what appears to be a focus on improving housing security for many of our local neighbors. I believe the plan to review the city's many land and vacant building assets is vital to tackle our housing crisis. The other critical first step is to prioritize funding for affordable housing construction. I support a larger contribution to the local housing trust fund, which offers a bigger bang for our valuable city bucks. I agree with the budget adjustment described in the Strong Towns letter: to commit $5 million of seed money for affordable housing production, with at least $3.5 million going to the local housing trust fund annually, instead of the proposed 1.5. The additional $2 million per year could come from a 1% adjustment to the contingency fund, 25% reduced to 24%. We understand that many cities similar to Santa Barbara use a 20% contingency level. In order to have a healthy economy and an equitable community, we need to support the creation of enough housing units for all incomes, starting with the 5,000 units mandated by RENA for residents and workers with low to moderate household incomes. We need a replacement for the redevelopment agency, which gave the city about $5 million a year before 2011, which would be worth a lot more today. Every dollar can be leveraged, so $1 million can generate $5 to $10 million in development capital. Local housing trust fund dollars are a self-perpetuating investment, because they operate like a loan that is paid back with interest to the city. And when our economy improves, we can apply for up to $5 million in state matching funds. The lack of a serious commitment to help make up for the years of inadequate production places even more burden on the workers and tenants, who are the most adversely affected by our crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any speakers online for this item?
No hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, back to council. And before we deliberate and whatnot, I'd just like to remind you that what we're here to do today is simply to approve the schedule going forward. We're not here to deliberate on specific items within the budget. And we also have a very large item that our people are lining up for after this. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, two hands were just raised online, just now.
We've already completed public speech on this one, so we're going to move on. So with that, back to council. Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. I understand we won't deliberate, but I will make a few comments, because it's an iterative process, and it'll come back. So first, again, I really want to thank you, finance department, city administrator, department heads, who've all worked very hard bringing this budget forward, and really appreciate the efforts for continued transparency and updating, and that's always been the goal. And it's, I appreciate that you work with us to keep making it more so. So general comments on the direction. I do agree with the new position of deputy city administrator. I think that's, would really like to rely on city administrators' expertise and ideas of how that could work, and it does seem to be a more even distribution across board, so I'm looking forward to that. I am looking forward to the more detailed look at downtown parking, just in general, and I'll say it now, it's not a surprise, but I just really firmly believe in keeping the parking rates lower. I believe that we would do more to increase revenue by having people stay and shop than by whatever it is we would collect in those parking fees. And so I understand that there is this study coming, and I'm really going to look forward to that, but I wanted to mention that now. Also looking forward to how we're using our public lots, and it's been a lot of discussion over the years of what could be used for other uses, so I think that will be really important feedback coming back. I do agree with restoring the police and fire positions. Those have been held open for a long time. I really agree with the restored library funding, that it should be ongoing, so wanted to definitely say that, and maybe even increased over time, but particularly, let's really hold those secure. And then to the public commenters, and I think it is an important part of the discussion, I would like to see at least an additional $1.5 million to the development of affordable deed-restricted housing. And I say at least, I think the $5 million total is a good number. I just think that we can find this. I don't think it has to all come from Measure I. I think that's where, when it's all put under the Measure I category, that makes it a smaller amount available. I think we can find it. I think there are a variety of ways, and those will be in the future discussions as the budget. You know, we had the foresight to come up with a local housing trust fund, and really worked hard, many members of the community worked hard, members of council, legal team, to have that become realized. And so we also had the foresight to include in our Housing Element update the need for a dedicated source of funding. So recognizing that that is not this yet, we have not identified that dedicated funding source, we're going to need to do that. But for now, for the next two years, we have funds that we could look at, and I think it's really, really important that we not say it all has to come out of Measure I, particularly because we approved the local housing trust fund before we had Measure I. And we approved our Housing Element update for a need for dedicated funding before we had Measure I. And so Measure I was a lot to continue with critical services, and, but also mentioned in there was housing. And so I don't think we need to split all the hairs on where that $5 million, you know, I would hope for $5 million, but I think we could at least get an extra $1.5 million than what is presented here. And other than that, I think it's really great to see a budget that has just that tiny bit of perceived surplus. I realize if we take the years out, it's not really all there, but I do think that we can find that additional, at least $1.5 million. And those would be my comments for now, and thank you.
Ms. Sneddon. No, no, it's Ms. Sneddon, you're Ms. Sneddon, Ms. Harmon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be very brief. I align myself with the vast majority of comments that Councilmember Sneddon just made, particularly, we very much seem to be going in the right direction in terms of transparency and really trying to educate ourselves and the public on how the budget works, so I really appreciate that. I just wanted to briefly mention the public comments around the importance of a conversation, a continued conversation looking at our reserve policy. This is something that I've, year after year, been talking about and feel is the conversation worth having. And so as we're thinking about whether it's increased funding to the local housing trust fund, or really any area of our budget, I want to put it out there that, to the extent that having that conversation is possible through this budget process, and I'm always a little bit unsure when exactly to bring it up, I would really appreciate, again, as in years past, the opportunity for us to sort of formally have that discussion once again, and thank you to the public commenters. It's really been gratifying, actually, in a lot of ways, to see how the community has begun to think creatively about solutions to these problems, and appreciate the support in opening the conversation. That's it for me. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
All right, very good. Just a very brief comment, just to clarify a few things. Yes, we've always been very supportive, particularly of the Housing Authority and other Housing Authority projects. Since the last five years, we've actually dedicated 23 million plus, six or seven million that are, that are worth the Creo funeral lot, which is dedicated to the next housing project. So we've been doing that part as well, some other things as well, but when we talk about our budgets, and when we talk about dedicating certain numbers, we have them lined out up there. When we talk about just saying another 1.5 or some arbitrary number, you know, let's talk about specific projects. We have such faith in our Housing Authority that we've never denied them when they've come to us. So that's the relationship we've had, and that's what we'd like it to continue. And rather than just build an arbitrary number, we'll do what we can on this end, but what we can't do, and I don't believe in dipping into reserves, I think those reserve policies are why we're able to float that bond, to do services, to build a police station, to build a new, fully accessible park, and that the rest of Measure I helps us preserve the services that people in lower-income neighborhoods need the most. So let's remember about libraries, let's remember about parks and all the other things it does. Housing is really important, that's pretty clear up here, but the rest of it's important as well. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Schedule IV, the budget hearings. Moved by Sneddon. Seconded by Santa Maria. May we have a vote, please?
Yes, this is a vote for item 15. Motion by Councilmember Sneddon, seconded by Councilmember Santa Maria for the recommended action. Councilmember Harmon.
Yes.
Councilmember Santa Maria.
Yes.
Councilmember Sneddon.
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Friedman not present. Councilmember Gutierrez.
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan.
Yes.
And Councilmember Rouse.
Aye.
Mayor Rouse, sorry.
Yeah, very good. Passed as unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, so the next item we said was going to be- Okay, so the next item we said was going to be heard not before 5:00, so we want to make everybody a chance to hear. We have a ton of speaker slips. I want you guys to plan, we're going to do one minute per because we've gone through the material a lot. If you want to combine speaker slips and dedicate your time to some other people, we combine up to five minutes per speaker, but the person that combines our speaker slip has to be in the room. And I'm assuming that we're going to receive a lot more speaker slips, but we already have a whole bunch, and we want to hear from people, but we also want to be able to deliberate and move forward. So we will reconvene at 5:00, and we will accept speaker slips in person and hands raised online at 5:00, and that will be the cutoff time. Yeah. And we'll see you guys back here at 5:00. We're recessed for the moment.
Madam Clerk, would you go ahead and read the item into the record, please?
Item 16, Amending Chapter 26.50 Regarding Tenant Protection, Ordinance Introduction. Recommendation that Council A introduced and subsequently adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council and the City of Santa Barbara amending the municipal code by amending Sections 26.50, 040, 26.50, 055, and 26.50, 070, and the addition of Section 26.50, 090 relating to just cause evictions.
All right, very good. Now, before we get the program into the presentation, I want to remind folks, we've already accepted all the speakers' lips are going to accept. We also have online that is already registered, and that's it. We've got to cut the speakers' times down to one minute each because there's a whole bunch of you that want to speak, and we want to hear from everyone. If you want to donate your time to somebody else, you have to be here, and you can donate a number of minutes, up to five, for one speaker. So if that floats anybody's boat out there, but I just want you to be prepared that we're going to have the timer on for one minute. And with that, we'll get going. So, Mr. Henske, if you would, please.
Thank you all, members of the City Council. Well, here we are again, talking today.
Madam Clerk, would you go ahead and read the item into the record, please?
Item 16, Amending Chapter 26.50 Regarding Tenant Protection Ordinance Introduction. Recommendation that Council A introduced and subsequently adopt by reading of title only and ordinance of the council in the City of Santa Barbara amending the municipal code by amending Sections 26.50, 040, 26.50, 055, and 26.50, 070, and the addition of Section 26.50, 090 relating to just cause evictions.
All right, very good. Now, before we get the program into the presentation, I want to remind folks, we've already accepted all the speakers' lips are going to accept. We also have online that is already registered, and that's it. We've got to cut the speakers' times down to one minute each because there's a whole bunch of you that want to speak, and we want to hear from everyone. If you want to donate your time to somebody else, you have to be here, and you can donate a number of minutes, up to five, for one speaker. So if that floats anybody's boat out there, but I just want you to be prepared that we're going to have the timer on for one minute. And with that, we'll get to going. So, Mr. Henske, if you would, please.
Thank you all, members of the City Council. Well, here we are again, talking about amendments to Chapter 26.50. And just as a reminder, this chapter was added to the municipal code by the City Council in 2020. It's been amended several times since, and the most recent amendments were in January of 2024. So what are we talking about today? Well, we're talking about three proposed amendments to Chapter 26.50, often referred to as the just cause eviction ordinance, that were initially recommended by the ordinance committee in December 2023. However, when it went to the council in January 2024, the three proposed amendments that we're talking about today were not included in the ordinance as it was adopted in January 2024. It was brought back to council earlier this year by a two-person memo under the council's procedures for adding items to the agenda. So that's how we got here this evening. This is just a summary of the three proposed amendments. The first is a limitation on rent increases for returning tenant following a substantial remodel. The second amendment is independent verification of the need for a tenant to vacate for a substantial remodel. And the third amendment is a one-year cooling-off period for when a new property owner acquires a rental property. So I want to talk about a little bit, before we get into the details of the three proposals, what the current Chapter 26.50 does not apply to. It applies to all rental units in the city, except the following. And this is just a summary. For the complete details, you need to refer to the actual code language itself, but I'm just going to go through the summaries. First of all, new units, those which have a certificate of occupancy within the last 15 years are exempt from the just cause provisions. And that's a rolling 15-year period. So you take when you are now, you look back 15 years, and see if the building had a certificate of occupancy during that period. If it did, it's exempt. So basically, all, you know, new units. A lot of those would be ADUs and things like that, new apartments, and such like that. Owner-occupied, single-family residences renting two or fewer units, and the owner lives at the single-family residence. Single-family homes, condos, townhomes that are not owned by corporations, REITs, LLCs that have a corporate member. In other words, if the house itself is the rental unit, subject to basically a single rental agreement, then it is exempt. It's not covered. On the other hand, if the house is rented out, the owner doesn't live there, but rented out to a number of different occupants within that house, basically turning it into a small apartment type of a unit, it is covered. The rental units are covered. And that's what's important, is that the ordinance applies to a rental unit and to the landlord-tenant agreement for that rental unit. Housing shared with the owner, if the owner lives in the unit and it is shared with somebody else, that's exempt as well. Also duplex units, where the owner lives in one unit and rents out the other unit, those are exempt. And then a number of what I call institutional-type of rental situations, hotels, which are obviously transient occupancies, less than 30 days, dorms, deed-restricted low-income housing, things of that nature, those are exempt. So getting into the proposed amendments, the existing municipal code gives a tenant a right of first refusal to return to a rental unit following a substantial remodel. So that's in the existing code. What the proposed amendment would do would limit the rent that could be charged to that tenant upon exercising the right of first refusal, and that would be the pre-existing rent increased by CPI plus 5% or 10%, whichever is lower. And then we've also put in additional language to clarify how CPI is determined. And basically, what I did was borrowed the CPI increase definition out of state law and included that in the ordinance, so that everybody knows what CPI, what the increase in CPI is. So that's the first amendment. The second amendment is independent verification. Under the existing municipal code, the requirements for a substantial eviction for substantial remodel are established. And basically, it's a remodel that requires the tenant to move out of the unit and to move out of the unit for more than 30 days. That's a, so the existing law requires the owner to give the tenant notice of the type and the scope of the work, why the work cannot be accomplished with the tenant in place, and why the work requires the tenant to vacate for more than 30 days. The proposed amendment, which was the same as was proposed back in December 23, and initially proposed in January of '24, is that there'd be a requirement for independent verification of the reasons. The independent verification would need to be provided by a licensed professional, like a contractor, somebody experienced in that, and it would have to be executed under penalty of perjury, and it could not be the owner himself or herself. Finally, there is a proposal for a cooling-off period. This proposal would add a new section, 26.50.090, which would provide that an owner can't commence an eviction for demolition or substantial remodel of a rental unit for a period of one year following the owner's acquisition of the property. In other words, the owner could continue to rent, the unit can continue to use a unit for that one-year period, but cannot evict the existing tenant for that, for a period of one year because of a remodel or demolition of the unit. We added an additional clarifying amendment. The council directed that we consider adding amendments that have been requested by legal aid, and these, this is one of those amendments. The other is incorporated into the definition of the CPI. But currently in order, intending to evict for substantial remodel, is required to provide notice of it to the tenant in writing of the tenant's right of first refusal to rerent the unit. The amendment would add an additional obligation to include in that notice a statement of the tenant's obligations to rerent, and if the rent restriction is adopted, to include notice of the restriction. So that's what, it's a kind of a, this is your rights, and these are my obligations. That's what the notice would say. Finally, there's additional text that needs to be added, and inadvertently didn't include it in the draft ordinance. It was my mistake, and I apologize to everybody in the audience who may have wondered what was going on. There are three uncodified intent sections from the January 2024 adopted ordinance that were included in the two-person memo and were not included in the draft that is in the agenda packet. That text, the same as it was included in the January 2024 ordinance, that was in fact adopted, so it's not anything that the council hasn't done before. It was adopted. That text has been distributed to the clerk, and 50 copies of the text were placed at the back of the room, so that people who were interested could get a copy of that. And so the recommendation is to add the three uncodified intent sections from the January 2024 ordinance and the two-person memo, which I just described, have been distributed, and copies are at your seats. And then, once you add those, introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only the ordinance that's been prepared, and I'm not going to read the whole thing, the clerk already did that earlier. And then, if there are any other additions or potential additions for future action by the council, the council could give those directions, and we would bring those back at a future time. That concludes the staff presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
We have questions for Mr. Henske. Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dan, can you remind me on that line on hotels, dorms, and deed-restricted low-income housing? How do we get to dorms designation? Is that in the hotel ordinance? Is that of the land use?
It's in the ordinance. It's in Chapter 26.50, and it's dormitories owned by and operated by educational institutions such as K-12 housing or universities. That's what dorms are.
So how do you, so what protection is there to keep an existing apartment building from turning into a dorm to avoid these changes?
Well, the first thing that would have to happen is they would have to get the existing residents who are in that apartment building out through a just cause process.
Why?
Why?
Yeah, why?
Because, because when you have a rental property that you're using as a rental, in order to change the use, you have to change the use by, you take the property, subject to the existing landlord-tenant relationships that exist there. And so, in order to convert the use to something different than it's used for now, an apartment, you have to remove the existing tenants. And under existing law, you would need to go through the just cause eviction process to remove a tenant, either...
I don't understand why, I'll just say, if I had an apartment building, 20 apartments.
Yep.
What prevents me from calling that a dorm tomorrow? That's what I don't understand, with the same people already there?
Well, you can call it a dorm.
Okay, but what prevents me from having it recognized as a dorm legally?
Well, you would first need to become an accredited educational institution.
That's, so that's an ordinance or state law requirement?
That's in the ordinance, sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
And is there a size minimum or max, or size minimum to get to that trigger?
No. There may be in the zoning ordinance, but I'm not prepared to speak to what is zoning ordinance restrictions on dormitories.
You should get my question, right? So if I got in a large apartment building, and this stands in the way of me having to qualify for 2650, is there a viable pathway just to change the designation of that apartment building to a dorm, so then 2650 does not apply to me?
The, let me change the hypothetical a little bit, because you asked for a viable pathway.
Yeah.
Suppose you owned the apartment. You could sell the apartment to a school or university. The school or university would take that property, subject to the existing leases, and they would need to go through the process of changing the apartment to a dormitory by removing the existing tenants. And they would be subject to the, they would still be subject to the just cause in order to get there. There's a viable pathway. It would probably just take a substantial amount of time.
No, okay. Well, that's good, in that case. But, so, a person living in an apartment, just a random person, can't just be changed to a designation of a educational-purpose dorm resident by the owner of the property? That's, I guess, my confusion.
Correct.
Okay, perfect. And then, on the independent verification, what's that going to look like? So what are you, what is staff going to be looking for from this contractor? What, is there going to be a template put out, language, acceptable language for under the penalty of perjury? Is that something that somebody will have a template available for people to use, so we don't get in another argument over, well, I did what your ordinance said, but we said, well, that's not what we meant to say, or it isn't what it said, that kind of thing?
I don't know what staff will prepare in terms of a template. Our office has not prepared a template. The ordinance is pretty self-explanatory. You need to have a document saying that the work can't be done with the tenant in place, and that the work requires the tenant to be removed for at least 30 days in order to do the work. The ordinance itself says that the work has to be done in good faith, and, you know, in compliance with the requirements for substantial remodel. So the verification, the verification is just those two things. The work cannot be done with somebody living in it, and in order to do the work, you need to have the person out for 30 days. That could be a letter signed under penalty of perjury. It could be a, could staff develop a form?
What does that look like? I just type on the bottom of my letter that I sign this under penalty of perjury, sign my name, and that's...
There's a, yes, there's a standard, there's a standard method by which you sign under penalty of perjury. Usually, it's, you'll say, "I declare or I affirm under penalty of perjury on the laws of the State of California that the foregoing is true and correct."
Okay.
Signed, dated.
The Google attorney will be able to help with that, right?
Any lawyer in town could help.
Okay, or not, right? So that's my, I guess my hope is you wouldn't need a lawyer.
You don't.
And then, on the cooling-off period, we had talked before that the, in my mind at least, the benefit of that was that the egregious examples that I've seen have all taken place at point-of-sale, and was to stop that point-of-sale and immediate eviction process to start with people. And, you know, if it's whatever, Bass Street, 52 units of residents cannot be absorbed into the city in a year or two, maybe. So, but one of the things we talked about was to, that the purpose of that was not just to stop the process, but was also to give warning to the tenants, so that the cooling-off period would apply, but also at point-of-sale, that notice would go to the tenants that the property had been sold. And that would serve as an early warning that there was a 12-month period that they might be renovated at some point, if the property chooses to go that direction. Does that still have merit? Any thoughts on that? Is that just something that can get a couple nodded heads, that we could put in this simply without slowing it down?
I'm not quite sure of your question. Is there a way that we could reword the ordinance?
So Corporation A goes and buys an apartment building from a mom and pop who have owned it for 60 years. Corporation A has plans, then, to renovate the entire building, either pre-2650, current 2650, or post-2650. And my suggestion was, in conjunction with the cooling-off period, that the city require Corporation A to notice all the existing tenants that the building has sold, and maybe provide a reference to 2650 as to, you know, there's a process, there's a 12-month protection, you've been put on notice.
Okay. The language that's included in this proposal simply says that they can't start a no-fault just cause eviction process for a period of one year following the acquisition of the property. They can keep, they can keep operating it, they can keep the existing tenants there, but they have to wait a year. What they do during that year, we don't, we don't dictate.
My point with that being that with the difficulty in finding replacement housing, whether protected by a comeback clause or not, it might take somebody starting at month 10 of the... 10 of that one-year process to find a place to stay in town. If they had notice at the first month of that cooling-off period, they might elect to go out and start worrying about it right then, rather than wait until the month before the 12 months is off, and be giving a surprise notice that 12 months and a day, here's the plans, here's the permits, here's your notice. So, tell you what, I've planted the seed. I'm not on the majority side of this action today, but if somebody wants to play with what's been suggested so far, I think that would be great. Okay? And then, I just have one more question, and I posed this to you when, a month ago, I think, whenever it was. So, a lease runs January 1st to January 1st. During the mid-period of that lease, let's just say in the last quarter of the year, somebody begins the process legally for, under the to-be-adopted provisions, somebody begins a legal renovation process, and the work takes into the next 12-month period. So, the original lease passes its first 12-month renewal, at which time, in current state law and our ordinance, that lease would have been able to avail itself of 5% plus CPI rent increase, and then comes to another such increase when the offer is made back to the, any tenants that can and are willing to return for 5% plus CPI. Does this setup make the property lose that first annual step-up in rent and only get the one after their renovation return?
Okay, that's an interesting question.
Thank you.
And I can't, I'll be honest, I cannot give you a definitive answer, and let me tell you why. The city does not currently have a rent restriction provision. That is a function entirely of state law. And so, you know, the annual increase that happens every year, and the limitation on that annual increase is a function of state law, is not a function of the city ordinance. What I can tell you is what the city ordinance would do is say that the eviction for a substantial remodel is basically a temporary interruption in the landlord-tenant relationship, but still a termination of tenancy for the purposes of the tenant living there. They have to move out. But for the purposes of our ordinance, it's continued a temporary interruption, and when the tenant, if, if, the tenant exercises the right to move back in, the amount of rent that can be charged because of them moving back is the pre-existing rent at the time they were evicted, plus 5% plus CPI times that rent, or 10%, whichever is less. What that does to the increase under state law, I can't tell you, because there's no case that has litigated that issue. And it would really be between, you know, the landlord and the tenant and the court system to tell us what would be the effect of that subsequent one-year rent increase. What I can tell you is, under this proposal, the rent would be limited to what I just described.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Sneddon?
Thank you, Mayor Ross. I just have one clarifying question. Under Section 2650.55D3, it, just the wording of 5% plus the change in the cost of living or 10%, is the change of the cost of living, what if the change of cost of living went down, like it went down this year 4%?
If the cost of living actually goes down, there's an adjustment for that cost of living going down. But the whole purpose of it is to take the 5% and, you know, plus the change in the cost of living, and if it's gone down, it would be a negative number. I mean, not a negative number, but, you know.
Effectively zero.
It's a subtraction.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that that was the same as CPI, is what we've, okay.
That's how you, how in law you describe CPI. It's the change in CPI.
Okay.
It's usually an increase.
Although recently, it just wasn't, so I just wanted to make sure.
I think it was not as much of an increase. I don't know if it went down.
It went down.
It didn't go as much.
I think it went down.
Maybe it went down. Okay. I don't know.
That's okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was in there. And then, I just want to also clarify, just to make certain, this applies for the two years to the previous leaseholder, the previous tenant. And so, if the tenant says, oh, I don't want, I'm going to exercise my right of refusal, I don't want that unit, then the property owner could rent it at any market rate, once it becomes available?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, very good. A couple of quick questions for you, Mr. Henske. Mike actually asked what I was talking about earlier with you. Given those three things that we talked about, the summary three amendments, the independent verification for the substantial remodel, as well as the cooling-off period, are those standard types of clauses in these actions, or is it unique to us, or does it function elsewhere? That you're aware of?
I honestly don't know the answer to that.
I just want, because they seemed, when I think about the realm of defensibility, you mentioned like not, we really couldn't give an answer to the whole thing about whether 1482 kicked in on top of the, you know, the return cap, and that would have to be a judgment. I think very clearly, we're going to have to anticipate some type of activity along those lines as we craft this and go forward, because it is arcane, it is confusing. The more I read this stuff, I got more confused, as you know, because I was calling you all night. So...
Mr. Mayor, if I could clarify?
Yeah.
You seem to suggest that there might be some doubt as to the legality of one of these provisions.
No, no, I don't think it's illegal. I just think it's not settled. In other words, I don't know how you make that, you can't make that call. And who would make that call? Well, probably a judge.
Well, what I can tell you is, I believe that all of these provisions withstand judicial scrutiny.
Okay. Very good. Good answer. About the single-family homes, so once again, you made it clear that if you're an owner occupied with two or less tenants, doesn't fall under this, owner occupied with more than two would become a quasi-apartment building, and non-owner occupied, the way we all lived coming out of college was six people in three bedrooms, would also qualify as a apartment?
If you had, let me, the answer is maybe. And let me tell you why. If you had one lease for the entire rental unit with six individuals, that would be a single rental unit under one lease. If you had six individual rental agreements with each of the six students, that would be an apartment.
Right. Which is more typical the other way around. As I know, back in the 90s, there was some ruling down in Orange County about, because it used to be, well, is it a contiguous family, are they related to each other? They said, no, you can't make that determination anymore. So I'm just, I'm thinking about the practical application of this.
That was actually Adamson versus City of Santa Barbara that you're thinking of.
I knew you'd know that. Okay, very good. If there are no further questions, are there questions from our people online, from our two council members?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Let's go ahead and go to public comment. As I said before, it's one minute each. If you want to combine, please let me know. Everybody has to be in the room. I'm also going to ask that there's so many of us, and it's a very, it's a very highly emotional subject, please don't cheer, please don't boo, please don't clap. We want to hear from everybody, and that just interrupts and takes extra time. So I'm going to call up the speaker's name. I'm going to call the person on deck. Please be ready to come up and speak. Jaclyn Inda, followed by Rick Lang. One minute, please, on the timer, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, Council, I actually have two people waving my time, and they turned in speaker slips.
Are they here?
Yes.
Can they raise their hands and identify themselves, please?
Carrie Rovitz.
Alex Avant.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last one?
Alex Avant.
Okay. Ms. Inde, you have three minutes. Will you be three minutes? Stay on three minutes, please.
Mayor, Council, my name is Jaclyn, and again, I'm here on behalf of Casa de la Raza. Casa de la Raza has been involved in the community for over 50 years. We have a community center that comes in and also has a resource center within it. In our resource center, we serve currently about 260 families a week. From those 260 families that come into Casa and come into our facility, 25% of those people come in with situations with regard to rental evictions, and fears of or threatens of. Most of our community is very vulnerable, all majority-minority-protected class. We know that the modification of this particular tenant protection changed in 2024, but there was a large loophole within the ordinance that caused it to be completely irrelevant. It made no difference, no substantial difference in our community center and in our communities. So we are asking and urging you to adopt all three of the different provisions that you have in front of you, so that we can fill those loopholes and actually make this document that is binding for our community and that we see results from it. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Lang, be followed by Betty Jefferson.
After coming here year after year to talk against punitive laws designed to punish property owners for trying to survive in Santa Barbara, it has become clear the city attorney and the majority of the city council are working for the tenant union and not the community at large. I know I cannot convince you of anything, because all of this is politically motivated. You are scapegoating property owners to further your political careers, and the community is paying the price. The horse you talk about do not exist. I encourage everyone to read Abolish Rent by Tracy Rosenthal. It shows the mentality of the people behind the Tenants' Right Movement. Their ultimate goal is to, is not the betterment of the community, but to abolish landlords and eventually even private property as well. If you think the grass is so much greener on the other side of the fence, I encourage you to stop building rental housing and start building more properties for homeownership. The apartment projects you are approving have 100 tenants for every one property owner. These projects should, could just as easily be built to create opportunities for homeownership.
Thank you. Betty Jefferson, followed by Rich Applebaum.
I have Evie Axelson, who's here, ceding her time to me.
I'm sorry?
Evie Axelson.
Wait a minute, this was for?
Betty Jefferson and Evie Axelson.
I'm sorry, what the other name was?
Evie Axelson.
Thank you. Go right ahead, you have two minutes, please.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Betty Jefferson. I'm the president of Santa Barbara Rental Property Association. I would like you to look at the actual language that you're proposing, which is, quote, "A written opinion supported by a detailed explanation and signed under penalty of perjury from an independent construction expert who holds a current and valid California Contractor State License Board license with classifications in A, B, or B2, as applicable to the proposed work, stating that the work cannot be reasonably accomplished in a safe manner with a tenant in place, and that the proposed work requires the tenant to vacate the rental unit for at least 30 days. The person preparing this report may not be the owner, the licensed contractor retained to perform the work, or otherwise be financially interested in the work, other than the payment for the preparation of the report. You would be making it virtually impossible to do any remodel if this passes. It is difficult enough to get one contractor to work, getting two contractors and asking that one sign a document under penalty of perjury is impossible. Have you checked with the California Contractor State License Board to see if this is even allowed? I have, but I'm still waiting for the answer after a month. The proposed amendment to Section 26.50.090 requires, quote, "An owner who acquires property having five or more rental units shall not commence a no-fault just cause eviction of any qualified tenant to demolish or substantially remodel a unit for a period of one year following the owner's acquisition of the property." You call this a cooling-off period on page four of today's city council report. What does that even mean? Is there some sort of hot period after buying property? When somebody is trying to purchase property, a lender may not lend the money to purchase if certain significant work is not done. The lender will not wait a year, the seller will not wait a year. Thank you.
Thank you. Rich Applebaum, followed by Angelisa Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I've given you a handout, since Councilmember Jordan early expressed a desire for everything in one place. You have it before you, a letter that Clue has written with the League of Women Voters. In my 49 remaining seconds, I'll make two points. First, the sky will not fall if the rent cap isn't acted. This is identical to California's Tenant Protection Act, as you've heard. 5% plus a CPI with a 10% maximum, which applies to all units that are not voluntarily vacated. Since the city's just cause ordinance was intended to give tenants the right to return, they do not voluntarily vacate but are forced to do so, it should be amended to conform to California law. That, I believe, is the intent of protecting the tenants. Without a rent cap, the ordinance is meaningless, treats the units as if they were voluntarily vacated and therefore subject to vacancy decontrol. Want to add one more thing, and I know my time will be up in a second, but you have a bunch of excellent amendments to this. The rent cap is key. If you can't agree on all three tonight, go with the rent cap and do the others later. There are tenants who face eviction right now.
Thank you. Angelisa Sanchez, followed by Anna Arce.
I'm going to be yielding my time to Peggy Nicholson. She just needs access over Zoom.
Where is she?
Over Zoom. Peggy Nicholson.
Do you have Peggy Nicholson on Zoom? Do you just have the one minute? Sorry.
Okay. Let's see. Okay. I'm here to speak on the just cause ordinance and the amendments proposed by Wendy Santa Maria and Kristin Sneddon, and uplifted by Oscar Gutierrez and Megan Harmon. We'd like to propose that you all listen to the provisions on the suggested amendments and adopt. The rent cap is urgent and necessary for many families in Santa Barbara who are currently at risk of being renovated. This is an urgent matter. It's not something that is up for debate at later time. It's something that we need to act on now, and it's something that a lot of you folk have already been discussing for a lot of years, and I think it's time that we finally move now and vote to implement the adoptions and amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna Arce, followed by Amber Asher.
Okay, so Anna Arce, and I'm part of District 1, and I'm here on behalf of CAWS, and I'm urging you to please move forward with the original language. We need to close the current loophole and the rent strikes after rent evictions. This is not rent control. This is to prevent tenants being forced out of their homes, further increasing our homelessness numbers in Santa Barbara County. And then, the just cause ordinance is one piece, that with that will continue to negatively impact our communities, our teachers, our first responders, our families and students, and their ability to afford rents in Santa Barbara. And Mayor, I also have, in regards to your question that you have, I would be more than happy to do a one-on-one with you about other ordinances in other cities that have gone through these changes, and I would be happy to share that information with you.
Amber Asher, followed by Hillary Kleger.
The contractor clause, so it's one of those things in this that sounds potentially like red tape, potentially like too much, potentially like punitive. I have a couple real-world examples, and probably not enough time to share all of them. But from my perspective, I have gone to the planning office. I have reviewed the permits related to my unit. I know, I can tell you that the first words on that permit are minor improvements, that it goes on to indicate that there need to be a few power outlets switched out in the kitchen, that there needs to be a bathroom fan installed in the bathroom, and somebody reviewing that might think that one wouldn't have to move out for that. But we won't know, because there's But we won't know because there's no sort of fact-checking on this work. I know other units in my property were underpermitted. The first one where a woman moved out, one of four units that were kicked out, hers was the only one with a permit, and all it said was a bathtub was being replaced. Thanks.
Thank you. Hillary Kleger, followed by Sarah Vek. One of those two.
Good evening, my name is Hillary Kleger, and I am a resident of Santa Barbara in District Six, but I've lived pretty much all over. I'm speaking in favor of the three amendments today. As a former homeowner and landlord in a high cost of living area, I understand the monetary investment, but there shouldn't be an automatic step-up in rent increases each year, especially if no one is living there during renovations. This is exactly why we need rent protections. There's a cost of doing business, and that is the responsibility of the homeowner that cannot continually be handed down to tenants. As a previous employee of UCSB and advisor to the Ivy Tenants Union and co-chair of the Rental Housing Roundtable, I saw firsthand the impact these rent evictions have made on our community by evicting individuals and families through no fault of their own, forcing them to move out not just of their home but out of the entire area and even the state, upbringing children from their schools. Often, the tenants weren't notified of their rights and were bullied and threatened. I myself have faced rent evictions as well, and it takes a long time to find a place to live in this town. So, please and thank you.
Sarah Vek, followed by Corina Savina. Svasina, there we go. Are you, are you Sarah?
Yes. Alex, are you ceding your time or not?
I think I'm taking Alex's time.
I'm sorry, wait a minute.
Oh, I'm taking Stephen Sharp's time.
What's the name again?
Stephen Sharp, here.
Can you fill out a speaker slip? Okay, you have two minutes then.
I'm Sarah Vek, I'm reading a statement from Martine White. She's a Baddest Stone tenant who couldn't be here today. "In 2018, I was given just 30 days to move out of my apartment as the landlord's son was divorcing and needed a home. I am very grateful for Cindy Baddest Stone and the Baddest Stone Foundation for providing an affordable home in my hour of need. My income was only 50K per year. Yes, I am concerned for my future, but even more so for the future of beloved neighbors aged 75 through 93. Moving is terribly disruptive at their age. Who will find their new home? Who will pack up their lives and move them? Who will pay for the move? So many costs. Additionally, affordable housing lists are all closed, with thousands waiting to get on them. The fear of rent potentially doubling is terrifying, unreasonable, and emotionally crushing. My UCSB colleague was bumped from her home in a rent eviction. The developer renovated and flipped it, flipped it, and then the new owner doubled the rent. She could not find senior housing. Eventually, she found a one-bedroom for 30% more than she had been paying, 24,000 per month, or 2,400 per month. Fortunately, she lowers her rent occasionally by pet sitting for the new landlord. I have nearly 190 edgy neighbors aged 62 to 95-plus. As I am only 70, I can find an alternative or move to another state, but those in their late 80s and 90s plan to die here, their final home. Please give them peace of mind and security by helping them to stay here with a 10% rap cap on rent increases and new legislation to prevent yearly increases of 10%, not sustainable. We scrimped, saved, and worked hard to retire in SB. Help us safeguard our future, keep costs down and cap rent increases. And thank you, Sam Baddest Stone, for being our angel guardian."
Okay, Corina Svasina, followed by Sandy Hattrick.
I'm really glad that Sarah just brought up the Baddest Stone apartments because I know a lot of you didn't really care about the local workers at 215 Bath that live there, even though we're nurses and electricians and marketers and chefs. Some of them even cook the pancakes that you guys like to enjoy with our owners. But there are now 190 senior residents that are going to be looking for housing in this terrible market. And you all now have the opportunity to be on the side of mom and pops, the people who really make up this town by working and living in this community. Because the multimillionaire developers here, they're not the mom and pops. They're buying buildings worth tens of millions of dollars, and they're behind the demise of Santa Barbara's housing here. We're asking you to regulate them with these three provisions today. I'm urging you to close the loopholes in the just cause ordinance by adding that 10% rent cap on return. And then I want you to also prevent greedy land grabs and hack construction jobs by having an independent contractor review. Thank you.
Sandy Hattrick, followed by Summer Howitt.
Hi, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Sandy Hattrick, and I stand behind and support the Bath Street Tenants Coalition. My friends and fellow renters are worried and stressed with justifiable concerns. Can you imagine how it feels that your home might be taken away from you? And you'll have to try looking for a new place in Santa Barbara, which ranks fourth for having the most severe cost burden for renters. I know this from recent experience. What should be affordable is not, and what you have to settle for, the living conditions are subpar at best. Santa Barbara is not just for the mega-wealthy. Please vote yes on these provisions to protect and preserve tenants' rights. Thank you.
Summer Howitt, followed by Max Golding.
Hi, I'm Summer Howitt. I've been here a few times, speaking on behalf of my neighbors and myself at Upper Bath Street. We're being rent evicted right now, and some couldn't be here today, one because she just had surgery, so she's home recovering. But she wanted me to tell you, this is from Peggy Nicholson, that she could only have surgery because she has a home that she could return to to recover for six weeks in a stable, quiet place to live. So, obviously, rent eviction is stressing her out more as well as all of us. And we're urging you to please close this loophole and protect tenants who live in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Max Golding, followed by Dora Perez. Max still here? Okay, Dora Perez. Followed by Christiane Nunez.
Good afternoon, City Council Members and Mayor Randy Rose. My name is Dora Perez, and I'm a resident of Santa Barbara. And I'm here on behalf of District Number Three. So, I'm here today to ask that you close the loophole in the just cause ordinance and implement, implemented a cap upon return. Adapt the original language in the just cause, the just cause brought forward by Sneddon and Santa Maria in their two-person memo. And by your constituents and do right by people who are commenting being, being rent evicted. And thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Christiane Nunez, followed by Samantha Ireland.
Hello, everyone. My name is Christiane Nunez. I'm a former resident of Santa Barbara, and I'm here today on behalf of CAWS, speaking in support of the tenants and working families who, like mine, have been pushed out due to lack, to, due to the lack of real protections for tenants here in the city. I was born here in Santa Barbara, and years ago, while I was still a student in the county, my family was displaced from our home here in the city. Our landlord claimed there would be renovations, but instead of real plans or permits, we were given a notice. Either pay a significant run increase to cover so-called upgrades or leave. The renovations never happened, but the pressure for our family was still real. We had no choice but to relocate to Ventura County. That move honestly disrupted a lot of things in my life, right? My education, my personal life, and the connection I had to this community. And to this day, my parents still commute to, here to hold on to their jobs. And it's taken a toll, physically, emotionally. And, and we didn't just lose our housing, but we lost the connection to, to the place we called home. Our story is not unique, and so I just urge you all to pass the amendments or the provisions being recommended tonight. These are protections that will make a real difference for tenants who are struggling in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Samantha Ireland, followed by Whitney Rubison.
I have someone who's donated their minute, Mimi Greenberg.
I'm sorry, the name again?
Mimi Greenberg.
Thank you. You have two minutes then.
My name's Samantha Ireland. I'm a Realtor here in Santa Barbara and also a board member of the Santa Barbara Association of Realtors. And I'm here to oppose the amendments made today for the following reasons. The first one, the right-to-return requirement with no consideration for actual cost complicates property improvements. So, if a tenant has a guaranteed right to return after substantial renovations at a fixed or below-market level, it discourages landlords from making necessary upgrades. Many renovations improve safety, habitability, and long-term value, but if owners are forced to bring back the same tenant at nearly the same rate, there's little financial incentive to undertake the costly projects. And this could result in older housing stock deteriorating over time, reducing the overall quality of rental units. Regarding the second amendment about the licensed contractor, if you're required to have a licensed contractor that has no investment or stake in the game to provide this, what is their motivation to do that? Who are you going to get to do that? You can't even find one to give you a bid to do the job. How are we going to get the second one? For no reason at all to put their statement out there for you. And then, thirdly, in regarding the one-year cooling-off period, it'll make properties harder to finance. Many buyers, especially those looking to purchase and rehabilitate older housing units, rely on financing that requires the work to be done immediately after closing. If lenders know that there's a one-year restriction, financing may not be approved at all. It'll make properties harder to insure, and it's potentially an unconstitutional taking. The U.S. Supreme Court is currently considering the Jim 24/7 case, which challenges policies that impose extreme restrictions. So, if challenged in court, this could expose the city to costly legal battles. Thank you.
Thank you. Whitney Rubison, followed by Kathleen Rogers.
Thank you, Mayor Ralph, Council Members, City Staff. Today, I speak on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Santa Barbara in partnership with CLU. We have researched the common concerns about the proposed rent increase cap. First, the right of return is not enough without a rent cap. Legal aid data shows that of 161 households evicted for renovations since 2023, only 43 remain. The rest were priced out, many worked and are providing essential services. Second, research proves rent caps don't stop new development. As an example, Pasadena saw a 194% increase in market rate housing proposals the year after adopting a much more far-reaching rent stabilization ordinance. Third, the law incentivizes landlords to make repairs gradually over time, keeping homes safe and habitable. Fourth, small-unit landlords are exempt. And finally, adding more market rate housing supply only alone isn't solving affordability. Santa Barbara South Coast added 2,200 new units, mostly market rate apartments in six years, but rents continue to climb. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Kathleen Rogers, followed by Hillary Kleger.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor and Council Members. This is my first time speaking here, and I am speaking from the heart. I have a lot of friends, I live on the West Side and am a homeowner. I have a lot of dear family members who are renters. And also, I purchased my first home at age 29. I am speaking out against the one-year waiting period. That doesn't make any sense. If you think about a person who needs a divorce, and someone tells them they have to wait a year. If you think about someone who needs a medical procedure, and someone tells them they have to wait a year. If you think about someone who needs a place for their kid in a new special program, and someone tells them they need to wait a year. So, I'm representing people who are buying and selling property. It doesn't make sense to have another obstacle to being a homeowner in Santa Barbara. We already have many, many obstacles to owning property in Santa Barbara. And I do very much appreciate all of our people that are renting here, and I feel like we need more housing, more support for employees and employers. And that is something that is extremely important that the city should be working on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hillary Kleger, followed by Stephanie Lanham.
And I guess I missed the punchy slips, I'd be happy to speak again. I only got one minute, but I did already speak.
I didn't actually hear everything you said, I'm sorry.
I guess I had two slips in by accident, I've already spoken.
Yeah, that's kind of, thanks. I appreciate it, but now we, we're still, we've still got miles to go before we sleep.
Hi, my name's Stephanie Lanham. I haven't spoken before about this because I have a job, and this is the only time I've been able to attend. I live on the Upper Bath property, and I've lived there for 13 years. The new owner came along in October, and within a couple of weeks, we had received, you know, noticed that they wanted us all to leave. The owner is a billionaire, comes from a billionaire family. And they're not, I own this one extra property and need to, you know, make income from that. He doesn't need this for income. It is an investment to him. And there are elderly people who live in my complex, who, there's teachers and nurses, and it's unfair to expect us to be first right of return and have to pay twice what we do now.
Thank you. Veronica Strauss, followed by Alex Trinken.
Veronica Strauss here again, Council Members. Today, I humbly request that you kindly consider the children involved in this housing crisis facing rent eviction. If you are unwilling to vote on behalf of the adults in this crisis, in this housing crisis facing rent eviction, please consider our children, not only mine, but all of the children involved in this. It's not fair to them, it's not fair to any of them, us, but especially them. They're innocent bystanders. And imagining them having to move schools mid-year, it's just inconceivable. And they are our future. They, you know, they, they need a better life. We all do, but especially, please consider them. That's pretty much it, consider the children. I do want to read this.
Kind of time anyway. Okay, Alex Trinken, followed by Sebastian Aldana Jr.
I'll be ceding my time to Stephen Sharp Queener.
So, you had a, okay.
Yeah, I mean, he's, consider that it was.
I'll let it go, but yeah, that's not how we usually do it. But go ahead, you got a minute.
Thank you, Alex, thank you, Council. So much has been said today about the, what's been going on with this ordinance, but I want to focus on one just thing, which is the, the actual harm of rent evictions, which I think doesn't ever get fully considered. We talk a lot about the risks, the outcomes, the property owners, et cetera. But the process itself is extremely harrowing. It's a reality in which at any point, your landlord can tell you that, for no fault of your own, you'll be forced to leave your home and likely leave Santa Barbara forever. And I think that's a harm no one should experience. Interning at the Legal Aid Foundation, I've seen firsthand what this looks like for members of our community. And let me tell you, it, it looks like violence. I've watched and tried my best to support a wide range of people navigate rent evictions, single mothers, the elderly, hospital workers, schoolteachers. I've watched their very real tears, their very real breakdowns, and their very real expressions of not having anywhere to go and feeling like their lives are falling apart when they've done nothing. It's a humanizing, it is a demeaning experience, and it's something no one should have to experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Sebastian Aldana Jr., followed by Lloyd Beersmore.
Okay, I get one minute out of 24 hours?
Yeah, exactly.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Sebastian Aldana Jr., a property owner for the past 22 years on the east side of Santa Barbara. I have two property, two dwellings, rent the front 40-style cottage. But it has come to the point where I need to make plans to renovate. It needs attention. I'm looking at 100-plus K, current rent is undermarket. I have always been fair. Now, I feel I'm being penalized for upgrading. I was contemplating adding an ADU, junior ADU, but, but what the heck for? You know, I'll just be paying more property tax, insurance, water, sewer, trash, et cetera. It's just, I feel I'm being penalized here. Please reject this item before you. Send it back to the ordinance committee and follow the process properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Lloyd Beersmore, followed by John Beersmore.
Mayor and Council Members, I come to you today with questions. Councilmember Santa Maria, during your campaign for council, you said you would protect and exempt mom and pops. But I would ask, how many small rental property? But I would ask, how many small rental property providers have you met with? Any in your district on the East Side? Do you know that 60% of rental properties are owned by mom and pops? Do your constituents know that single-family homes and ADUs, et cetera, are not explicitly exempt? Do you? You are pushing this, but how do you intend to protect them? In October, there was a public workshop. City officials said that was the first of more workshops, and yet, nothing is... No other workshops have happened. So I ask, when and where do these additional public meetings, where did and when do they take place? Those of you today are violating the public's trust. Do you feel comfortable knowing you broke this promise? And with Eric's absence, one-sixth of our city doesn't have representation. Aren't you being opportunistic in denying democratic fairness without this representation?
John Beersmore, followed by Anna Luis Rios.
Council members and Mayor Rouse, these proposed amendments will result in people not renovating their properties and discouraging future investments. How does this incentivize people investing in real estate? I'm hearing that owners are taking their rentals off the market due to more restrictions. It used to be that you could buy a rundown property, fix it up, maximize your investments, and keep Santa Barbara beautiful. How does this help small mom and pops like me to understand all these new laws to avoid being criminally charged for something I've done wrong? You also assume that every property owner is a member of SBRPA and understands these regulations. As a member of the rental mediation board, I can tell you that this is not the case. How many people that rent single-family homes, AUDs, triplexes, that this might apply to... Don't know that this might apply to them. Most people I talk to don't know this. When a buyer cannot renovate for a year after purchase, will the city be liable for a death or from faulty electrical or other problems? Thank you.
Anna Luis Rios, followed by Lanny Evenstein.
Hi, good evening. I have a question and a point. My question is, how many community forums did the city have done to inform the public about these proposed laws? And the point I have is, these laws could up subject while intending yet uninformed property owners to civil liability and/or criminal charges. Thank you.
Thank you. Lanny Evenstein, followed by Nico Gonzalez.
Mayor Rouse, members of the council, thank you for your time. Thank you for your consideration. I'd like to thank Mr. Henchke for clarifying the coverage of single-family residences under the ordinances before you. We, at the last meeting, had the question asked, are single-family residences covered? And the answer back was, they're not covered. Well, we've learned tonight that, and previously, that single-family residences that have the owner living there and rent more than two units or rooms are covered. And if they don't live there and rent more than one person renting their one rental, that it's also covered. That's many single-family residences. And if those individuals who own homes aren't able to improve their properties and have much greater restrictions placed on them, they're not going to rent more units and rooms in their homes. So I encourage you to enact the mom-and-pop solution to Santa Barbara's housing crisis. Encourage people to have rentals and ADUs and junior ADUs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Nico Gonzalez, followed by Eva Maria... Going to guess on this one. Catalan? Catalan.
Honorable Mayor, honorable Mayor of City Council, throughout this whole last few years, Mrs. Santa Maria and Mrs. Snedden repeatedly stated that you would protect the mom and pop. You had your own various definitions. I'm here today to speak on behalf of many of the Latinos, and there's actually thousands that live and rent their house, their duplex, their triplex, or their fourplex. I'm going to leave it at that, because those are the type of people that I helped years ago in Santa Barbara acquire these properties. I am in opposition to any policy that unjustly takes away the rights of these individuals and gives it to another without consideration of the other person, tenants', economic or financial standing. You are going to unjustly take from people of lesser economic means and transfer it to people with greater. That's not right or fair.
Okay, Eva Maria Catalan. You might correct me on that. Followed by Jose Martin.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Eva Maria Catalan, and I've been a proud resident of Santa Barbara for 32 years, and I'm part of the Eric Freedman's district. I urge you to take action by closing the current loophole in the Just Cause Ordinance. Specifically, I ask that you include a rent cap upon returning after renovations to prevent tenants' displacement. Rent in Santa Barbara is already incredibly high. A two-bedroom apartment now goes for $3,000 and up, and that's simply unaffordable for many working families like mine. I live in a one-bedroom with my family because that's all we can manage. The last thing we need is to fear for the rent hike if our building undergoes renovations. We need real protections that keep us in our homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Jose Martin, followed by Stanley Zankoff.
Hello, council members and mayor. My name is Jose Martin. I am a current resident of Santa Barbara. I am in support of the amendment of the Just Cause Ordinance to close the loopholes. I believe that there should be a one-year waiting period before any major renovations are implemented. It is important that tenants feel safe when they request repairs without the fear of that they will be evicted or any retaliation. I hope what you all consider what has been said and what will be said. Thank you.
Thank you, Stanley Zankoff. I knew he was in here, so I was skulking around earlier. I'll skip over him, because I know he's probably coming right back. Go to Catherine Henry. Oh, there's Stanley. You're late. Stanley, yeah. And then I hope Stanley be followed by Catherine Henry.
Well, hello again. So it's been over two years now that hundreds of our neighbors began sounding the alarm about rent evictions, and I'll skip the policy details, because I think at this point, if you don't get it, you probably... Respectfully, you probably don't want to. I'm grateful that councilmembers Snedden, Santa Maria, Harmon, and Gutierrez know that these common sense rules of the road are so painfully overdue. What really, really puts heaviness on my heart is the dozens and dozens of people who just had to move on and move out and leave the area. Folks who just got too burnt out after coming home to the 11th scary notice or lost their hair. This stuff, it's home, and delaying policies like this year after year shapes who can stay here. So I think when we talk about rent caps, which we need to, when we talk about tenant protections, like representation, legal representation, and affordable housing, we need to get it right, but we also need to do it with an urgency. Thanks.
Thank you. Kathleen Henry, followed by Kim Berthelsen.
Good evening, mayor, council members, and staff. My name is Catherine Henry, and I am a community organizer here on behalf of Planned Parenthood Central Coast Action Fund. I'm a renter in District 5, and I work in District 1, as do many of my colleagues. I'm here to ask you to take action to protect the tenants in Santa Barbara County who are at risk of rent eviction. As we know, so many of our residents here are renters, and many of the patients and staff who walk through Planned Parenthood doors every day to get care are renters. This means that many of them are at their... Face the risk of rent evictions, and right now, patients, staff, and community members are getting pushed out of their homes, becoming homeless, or having to move further and further away from their jobs and families. We join our community partners in asking you to pass all three of these amendments. A community without access to safe and stable housing is not a healthy one. We urge you to pass these Just Cause amendments and protect renters from hiked rents after rent evictions. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Berthelsen, followed by Hannah Cohen.
Good evening. I have been here twice asking you to close the rent eviction loophole out of general concern for my community. But I just learned last week that my landlord is selling the property that I live in. Since my wife and I don't pay anywhere close to market rate in Santa Barbara, I'm almost certain that whoever the next owner of the property I live at is, they're going to attempt to use the rent eviction loophole to evict me and my wife so that they can raise the rent. And we cannot afford market rate in Santa Barbara, which means we will have to leave town, where we will have to leave Santa Barbara where we have lived for eight and 17 years, respectively. So today, I'm not asking you to close the loophole out of a general concern for my community. I'm asking you to help me stay in my home and in my town so I won't have to leave the only life I've known as an adult. Thank you.
Here, Hannah Cohen, followed by Ian Bauckey.
Good afternoon, Mayor Rouse and council members. My name is Hannah Cohen, and I'm a tenant in Santa Barbara. And it is very important to me and my fellow Santa Barbara residents and community members that we adopt these changes. The cost of buying a home in Santa Barbara is astronomical, and many residents are forced to rent long-term to be able to live in this city. Forcing families to uproot their lives and come back to a massive rent hike is completely unreasonable. I am calling on you today to protect our community, and please vote in favor of the proposal. Thank you.
Okay, Ian Bauckey, followed by John Esteban.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Ian Bauckey. I'm speaking purely on my own behalf as a local tenant who grew up in this community. I know firsthand how desperately we have needed this kind of legislation for many decades. I have seen far too many of my friends who I went to school with and their families who invested their lives here, who the city and our schools have invested in, uprooted. They should have seen a return on their investment as well. This is not about vilifying landlords. My own mom and pop are mom-and-pop landlords, and they support this proposal as well. This is about creating stability in our rental housing market. Forcing tenants who would otherwise stay in their homes back onto the rental market is bad for everybody. This will reduce demand, and it will reduce a lot of human suffering. So I strongly encourage you to vote yes, and I want to thank councilmember Santa Maria and Snedden for your tenacity in continuing to push this and not taking no for an answer. Thank you.
John Esteban, followed by Lisa Haworth. Did you already speak? Is she still here? Did you speak already? Oh, okay. It's just me. Okay, you're after John. Go right ahead, please.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is John Esteban, here representing Future Cities of America. I'm a lifelong resident of Santa Barbara, born and raised on the West Side, and I am here to voice my strong support of the proposed tenant protection policy that would cap rents for tenants returning after a substantial remodel, require independent verification for remodel-related evictions, and implement a one-year waiting period before new owners of multi-unit properties can initiate such evictions. These are fair, thoughtful, and much-needed protections that close existing loopholes and prevent abuse of the substantial remodel provision as a backdoor to displace long-term tenants and drastically increase rents. Without rent caps for returning tenants, there's little to stop landlords from using remodels as a pretext to remove tenants, only to rerent the units at significantly higher rents. This undermines the spirit of tenant right-to-return laws and fuels displacement in housing insecurity, especially for working families like mine, seniors, and others living on fixed incomes. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Haworth, followed by Elliot McDougal.
Council members, Lisa Hayworth. I'm here again on behalf of my local, hard-working neighbors and myself to support the ordinance to add the additional tenant protections. You all have had the power to adopt this and are more than familiar with the significance of how this and of how it will positively impact the community. I implore you all to do the right thing today and put a stop to rent evictions. Myself and my 52 neighbors at 215 Bath Street should have never gone through this nightmare and harassment that we continue to go through, which has taken almost two years of lives of our lives fighting to stop this from happening to others in our community. Do not turn a blind eye again to thousands of others who will be adversely affected if you do not pass this tenant protection. Why is this... Why is it that this has not been adopted? I ask again, who is it that is profiting from our mistreatment and our misery? Do not allow multimillionaire developers like James Knapp to dictate how the working class of Santa Barbara live. Thank you.
Thank you. Elliot McDougal.
I've just finished building a small apartment on the West Side, so I've actually got a somewhat rare perspective on the housing challenges of our city. Look, I was born and raised in Santa Barbara. I'm sympathetic to the goals of this ordinance. I've spent the last five years trying to address the housing supply issues that we face. There are a number of problems with this proposal. Most basically, has anyone actually done the math on a 10% maximum increase in rents? Take a $2,500 a month apartment. That means a 10% increase, $250 a month after renovation. At a very minimum return, a landlord couldn't spend more than $20,000 on that renovation. I don't know if anybody has done any homework on their home recently or hired a contractor, but nothing substantial gets done for $20,000, unfortunately, in this town. Look, I can tell you what's going to happen as a landlord, but just as basic logic, investment in housing is going to fall as a result of this. Property owners are going to have no choice but to allow their buildings to degrade to the point that they're uninhabitable before tearing them down and rebuilding them. That's all circumventing both the letter and the intent of this ordinance and leaving tenants in worse and worse conditions. We can do so much better than this.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have speakers online?
Please remind them it's one minute.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. These speakers each have one minute, and let me get the list here. Okay, we'll hear from... And these are persons who raised their hands by the deadline. Nancy Avote, Robin Elander, Daniel Rhodes, Gabriel Ochoa, and Kim Pascag. So Nancy Avote, please go ahead.
Hello, city council members. My name is Nancy Avos, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my two housemates who rent in District 6. I'm also here on behalf of Santa Barbara County Action Network, SBCAN. I've been here on this issue twice before, as I am personally affected by the lack of rent protection in the city. We hope you'll vote to adopt the right of return and a rent cap embodied in the amendments listed in Agenda Item 16. This will help reduce loopholes in the tenant protections, not only facilitating tenants' and local employees' abilities to keep over in Santa Barbara, but also creating some disincentive to predatory practices aimed at replacing working-class tenants with higher-end customers who will pay premium rents. The city will always need lower-income earners to sustain its economy, schools, and its future. How can we make sure those jobs continue to exist and our community is protected? Consider the urgency of these amendments. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Robin Elander. Robin Elander, please go ahead.
Mayor, council members, and community members, I'm speaking on behalf of the Downtown Santa Barbara Improvement Association's Land Use and Executive Committees. The DSBIA understands the community's concern and the urgency of the housing crisis. However, the organization is concerned that this ordinance could potentially unintentionally slow much-needed housing production. Santa Barbara is in critical need of more housing, and the board believes city policy should focus on new housing development. We respectfully urge you to prioritize strategies that grow the housing supply while ensuring long-term quality and livability in our community. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration and deliberation today.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Daniel Rhodes is no longer in the meeting, so Gabriel Ochoa. Gabriel Ochoa, please go ahead.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Gabriel Ochoa. I'm a resident of Santa Barbara, and I work at Santa Barbara City College, where I support students who are facing housing insecurity. Over the past year, we've seen a huge increase in students seeking housing assistance, nearly double compared to last year. I've seen the toll of unstable housing and rising rents take on students who are working hard to improve their lives through education. As students don't know where they'll sleep at night, it becomes nearly impossible for them to stay focused in class, complete assignments, and even stay enrolled. Many of our students are juggling school, jobs, caregiving responsibilities, and personal challenges. When they face sudden rent hikes or are forced to move out due to renovations, it often pushes them to their limit. I've seen students drop out, not because of lack of motivation... I've seen students drop out, not because of lack of motivation, but because they slimly can, can't continue without stable housing. While Santa Barbara City College does have funding to assist housing insecure students, that support is not permanent. Once those funds run out, there's no long-term safety net. And that's the real hardship, watching a student finally achieve some stability only to fall back into homelessness.
Thank you.
That kind of instabability doesn't just affect their education, it threatens their entire future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
And our final speaker is Kim Pascag. Kim Pascag, go ahead.
Hello, City Council. I'm reading a statement from Peggy Nicholson, who cannot be there today because she's recovering from a six-week surgery. This medical care was delayed because she was afraid her home of twenty years might become unlivable due to rent eviction. Should anyone have to put off medical treatment because a developer wants to maximize profit? During her recovery, I think about, she thought about the people who took such wonderful care of her, all of them at Cottage Hospital, everyone who keeps the hospital running, um, nurses, custodians, lab techs, food service workers, billing staff. These are just some of the important people who keep the city running, and they deserve the security of knowing they won't be pushed out by profit-driven development. Santa Barbara must be a city that serves all its people, not just the wealthy few who can afford to buy up properties and displace long-term residents. Please pass these amendments today and provide the protections that protect renters and ultimately our workforce. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, very good.
That's almost right.
Okay, well, closed public comment, and we'll bring it back to council for deliberation and inaction. Who'd like to tee it off? We already did that. No, in terms of Megan and Oscar, I don't know if they, sir is going to tell me if they raised their hands.
They're, the remote councilmember's hands are not raised right now.
Okay. Oh, go ahead, one of you, for gosh sakes.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. Um, I, to, well, these amendments have been through due process. I think they've been through due process ad nauseam. Many of you have been here multiple times, taken time out of your busy lives while you're also dealing with issues of being evicted, um, to come and testify over and over. But even with that, every time we hear this, we see new faces because there are new units that are being impacted. There are new people affected every time we talk about this and don't act. We're actually exacerbating the problem. Just to review the process, and Mr. Henske already reviewed, December twenty-twenty-three, that's a long time ago that the ordinance committee moved this forward with all three recommendations. That is worth noting. It came forward with all three recommendations that you're seeing here today. When it came to council in January twenty-twenty-four, at that time, uh, one of the recommenders out of ordinance, um, maybe saw it differently and, and had a change of heart, which is, happens all the time. Um, but it had come with recommendation out of ordinance, then was heard again in January. And at that time, Councilmember Harmon noted that the ordinance, as passed, would have a loophole that would lead to these issues that we've been seeing. We passed it anyway because we were hoping to move forward what we could out of it. And as time has passed, we've seen that that loophole is gaping and has impacted real people and their real lives, upwards of almost a hundred people. And these are children, moms, families. And so even though it wasn't closed at the time, we're using data based on that time period that it continues to be an issue. The longer we wait, and if we were to wait again, that would be tens of more people each month that we're looking at. These are people of all ages, members of our community. If you put together all the different testimonies over all the times that this has come forward, we've heard firsthand from nurses, teachers, moms, families, first responders, our own city employees, many people have been affected by this. And I believe our job is to protect all members of the community. It's important to be maintaining properties as you go, if you're a property owner, and not saving it up. And if needed, then you could be renovating one unit at a time as it becomes vacated without needing to go through this process. Properties have to be safe and habitable. There's also been a lot of misunderstanding even today on what this applies to and what it doesn't. And even though Mr. Henske laid it out again, what it applies to, there's still the misperception that this applies to single-family homes. It does not. It does not apply to new units in the fifteen years. It does not apply to housing shared with owners. I heard a public speaker say that it would impact duplexes and condos. It very explicitly does not apply to those properties. It's very narrowly defined. It's just focusing on closing a loophole that has existed and that, in the time that it's been open, we've seen the impacts of it. This is not intended to be the only strategy. This is closing a loophole in one of the many strategies that we've discussed as a city, that we've discussed in task forces, in many public meetings. And this is one area that has been heard publicly more times probably than any issue I can remember in my time on council, this one particular loophole. I think it has had due process. I think it has been fully described, and I think it's time to pass it.
Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I will not support the action today, which is kind of arguing against myself because I think I was the birth parent of one of the amendments, fortunately or unfortunately. So, uh, I don't think I need to repeat my reasons. Several of the public commenters are, I would just parrot, and I think we've heard them ad nauseam, as has been stated. Um, I think we, I don't think you'll find any disagreement sitting up here that this problem is real. Ironically, one of the, uh, things in common that I share with Councilmember Santa Maria is we're the only two sitting, or any prior councilmembers that were knocking on every door at 215 Bath Street, fricking year or more ago, whenever that was. So, um, uh, I think that is definitely a perspective-altering experience, to say the least, to greet people who are living through that experience. Nevertheless, I disagree with the pathway to solve the problem. I don't know that I have a pathway, but this is not the one that I believe will lead to a, um, anything other than a, um, an, a enthusiastic gain by those in the units now and never to be seen by anybody following them, along with all the other baggage that's been explained. Really, my only hope today is that we avoid even what past versions of ordinance tweaking have done, uh, at least one or two that I was pretty prominent in. And that's lead to uncertainty out in the field over questions like I asked today, like, why aren't we telling people what they need to do, what findings they need to show, what their language needs to be on a third-party notice of confirming the, the need to vacate? Why aren't we helping with that, to help people with that, rather than wait till that happens and then make a subjective ruling that what we're being, what we're being given doesn't meet the, the, the intent of the ordinance or the language of the ordinance? And then be put in a situation where we also get drawn into the disagreement on a procedural basis. I think, um, I think we're going to learn what those are. I can't think of all those situations, and we're going to learn pretty quickly what they are, but, um, I think in the big picture, that just plays into the goal of what we're doing here today, and that's to slow down and stop the action no matter what. So, um, and I, I'd just like to say too, you know, I appreciate being given ten pages of, I don't know what they call it, a, a white paper on examples of where something has worked in other cities in each way, that it hasn't reduced housing starts, it hasn't reduced the number of units, it hasn't put mom and pops out of, uh, out of, uh, out of business. If you don't know anything about me, you should know that I focus in the weeds, that I don't really get involved at the thirty-thousand-foot level. I can show a study, or I've been given a study by other credible sources too that say exactly the opposite happens. So this is one of those flip-a-coins, and long after I'm done sitting here, perhaps even long after other people are done sitting here, we will see either the successful consequence of this or the negative consequence of this. And, uh, from that point, wherever we are, we'll be able to actually have a valid opinion on whether this is the answer. So, um, I will continue to unfortunately not support the action today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Santa Maria.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. As I was listening to public comments, I was taking notes of some of the most, well, some of the key highlights that, that I heard. Uh, renovations, of course, are at the heart of what we are doing today. And there seems to be this idea that if there is no incentive for you to upgrade, or not upgrade, renovate, and keep your building up to code, then you shouldn't do it. And I'm going to tell you right now, as a former community organizer, as somebody that has walked almost every single street in the city and has knocked on so many doors, these buildings are already not being renovated. These buildings are already not up to code. These buildings, my, my question is, there, this ordinance didn't exist before, these provisions that would allegedly prevent upgrading your building, these didn't exist before. So why weren't buildings being kept up to, up to code? We have heard from way too many tenants living in deplorable conditions, the rents are being raised by even more than ten percent, and we don't see renovations. And so the problem exists already. I do not believe that this is a new problem that will be created simply through this ordinance. We have seen the success of this ordinance in other cities. I highly recommend to my colleagues that if you are curious about where it's, how it's worked in other cities, to, to take the invitation from cause and, and listen to the policy experts there and, and really get your sources from the folks that are studying this for a living. Other things that were brought up today is the sheer numbers of people being affected by this. From La Casa de la Raza, we heard about two-hundred-and-fifty immigrant families coming in for assistance, and twenty-five percent of those folks coming in regarding rent eviction cases. We are hearing from the Baddestown tenants, we are hearing from literally hundreds of seniors. Anybody that tries to say this is not a problem in our city is either purposely ignoring this, or maybe you just haven't gone around. But if you are genuinely not aware of this legitimate crisis, I invite you to go knock on your neighbors' doors. I invite you to go and talk to your neighbors because the investments in our community go so far beyond just buying a property. That is absolutely an investment in our community, and that's great. But that is not the only investment we should honor. The majority of our city are renters, more than sixty percent are renters, and they are investing their time, their life, their labor into keeping this city running, and I intend to honor their investment as well. You already know where I stand. And after hearing from, I'm just going to rattle, rattle off some of the folks I heard from today, cause, legal women voters, CLU, Planned Parenthood, La Casa, La Casa de la Raza, yes, the Santa Barbara Tenancy Union, Santa Barbara County Action Network, Santa Barbara City College, all of these folks, these groups, these diverse organized constituents are all coming forward with the same message. And these are all folks who don't have a financial vested interest in this. These are just folks who are working in our community, who help the most vulnerable, our, the elderly, our children, our students. I am on the side of our constituents. I am on the side of the folks that keep our city running. We have seen in other cities that these types of ordinances do not cause the sky to fall down. We can have a balanced city where we are closing these loopholes and preventing further displacement from even our own city workforce. And so I, I do not believe in, in any way that this is something that is going to prevent new development. New units are exempt. And it was something that Mr. Henske detailed out in very clear detail. And if you, for whatever reason, missed that presentation earlier, I highly recommend you go back on the YouTube and look at the presentation that our Assistant City Attorney gave with such detail. There is, of course, a lot of, you know, there, there'll, there'll be different scenarios that come up, and I think that, like any ordinance, this is something that if we need to further amend later, we can always further amend. But this is an amendment, this particular amendment, these three amendments here have been, through the due process, have been talked about for now years, and there is no, there, there's literally no reason to delay. There are people's lives, not just money, at risk here. And my job as a representative of my district and the city is to protect people's lives, is to protect your safety. And we talk a lot about things like public safety and, and all these other things that are important to our city, and they should be. But public safety also means having a home. You know, once you have a surgery, having somewhere to, to rest, having a home to retire in. These are, are the things that unfortunately, because of the way that our housing landscape looks like, homeownership is not necessarily possible for every single person. The majority of folks renting still contribute to the city whether they own the property or not. And so for us to ignore those contributions, I think would, would be more harmful than anything. So I'll leave it at that. I won't make a motion quite yet. I would love to let our mayor make comments before, but I, you, you know, you know where I stand. I have never wavered in my positions long before I ran for council, and that is why the community asked me to run. I stand firmly in, in standing with our tenants and working families and our property owners and housing providers that are doing the right thing. Because yes, you can be a mom and pop and do the right thing and thrive in the city without exploiting others. It's doable, and that's what we're aiming for. I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
I believe, uh, Ms. Harmon has her hand up.
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. It is almost six in the morning where I am now, so I'm going to try my best to be coherent and as brief as possible. And particularly because as, um, I think both councilmembers, Santa Maria and Seddon, said in their comments, you know, our, our views on this issue have been made known many times over the years. This is, um, a conversation we have had many hearings on, um, given my thoughts on in myriad different ways, in different forums, countless conversations. And this is a conversation that, that we have had, uh, over and over again. And, and I agree with them very much that due process, um, has been more than respected throughout this, um, the consideration of, of this item. I do want to say, you know, the rent eviction loophole that we're talking about is, is really quite a narrow loophole, and I think that's really important for us to keep in mind. It's a loophole that covers a highly specific situation, um, that is in some ways small but punches way above its weight in terms of impact. Um, it's a narrow loophole that has outsized effects on those that are faced with its consequences and outside effects on the fabric of our community. And, you know, when we talk about unjust eviction, of which, uh, rent eviction is clearly one, um, it has such a destabilizing effect on anyone who experiences it. And those effects are, um, the research shows, borne more intensely and more often by, um, the most vulnerable in our community. I want to say too, um, because there's been so much misunderstanding about this rent eviction loophole that we're talking about, we're not saying that, and this loophole, I should say, or the ordinance change that we're talking about today, doesn't say that a landlord can't renovate. I want to make that very clear. It says, if your unit is occupied, here are the guardrails, here are the rules of the road. road that are going to govern your renovation effort. If you want to wait until your tenant moves out of the unit to renovate, you could enter into a new lease with a new tenant at whatever rate of rent you want. It really is about just setting expectations about how the relationship will work in a way that ensures fairness, equity, and the values that we all hold so dear in this community. It's really about doing the right thing, I think. Closing this loophole is necessary, and the most vulnerable in our community are depending on us to do so. So my gratitude to Councilmembers Sneddon and Santa Maria for bringing this item back, and I will certainly be voting in support of its application this morning, this evening. Thank you.
Morning in Dubai. All right, very good. Well, here's a couple of quick comments, but kind of all know what's going to happen, but, you know, the thing is, it's not that, you know, all of us up here, myself and Mr. Jordan and Mr. Friedman included, are tenant advocates, and I think to push it any other way is unfair. We just don't agree that this is the proper way to go, to supply the proper amount and the proper quality of housing that we deserve to have for rental units in this town. It's unfortunate, because the consistent reference to property owners in both the rhetoric I hear, and particularly in the forum letters I got from a lot of you, is like landlords were greedy, they were oppressive, they were rent gougers. And, you know, when you have a balance like this, you have a two-party system here, you have renters and tenants, they both need each other, and when you try to weight one side the other, is evil versus good, is victim versus oppressor, you come up with this, these kind of discussions, and it's really unfair. Cooperative discussions is the way we try to do things here. We tried that a few years back. We had a mediator, we had three people from CAWS and the tenants union, three people from landlords, spent six months coming together, and they came up with a unanimous decision, and then, for some reason, council voted against it, because I think they were influenced by other political factors moving in. It's really too bad, because that was a great Santa Barbara way to solve things, that was cooperative, that was both sides in a room with an uninterested third party. So I resent, actually, tossing the word loophole around. The loophole kind of connotes a criminal evasion, some way to get around something, some way not to do something. You know, we hand, these attorneys have, have us for clients, so you should pity them, but we come up with these policies, and it's up to them to define them, it's up to them to make them work, and that's why we're having these questions that are really kind of hard to answer. You know, they're not that firmly tied down, and the more arcane we make these situations, the more complicated we make them, the harder these questions are to answer. We've relied to make this great policy, this grand policy, citywide policy, mostly on anecdotes and stories, and you've heard me over and over again as for data. Fortunately, the woman from Legal Women Voters, that's some of the first data I've heard this argument. I'll be talking to you guys on the first, during your meeting, because I really want to hear, I want to flesh that out and find out exactly what you're talking about. That's the first I've been presented by. I've got a bunch of stuff from the landlords, I know, all about how much it costs to do this and why this doesn't work. I'd love to hear the other side, I just haven't been presented it yet, and that's really unfortunate, especially if you're making something this complex and this overreaching. The most important requirement we ever decided to do in this council when it came to tenants and landlords was require a written lease. It's, it's a natural, it's a, it's a legal and binding document between two parties. They don't need us in the middle of the two of them, and what we have, there's something misunderstood or something not, not complied with. We have, we pay, and kind of unusual for a city, we have a rental housing mediation task force, fully funded by the city. We actually gave money to legal aid to represent, to try to stay out of these situations, and yet here we go further and further into the weeds, and something that's becoming more and more murky and more and more arcane, and puts one side against the other. The attempts at trying to tweak a market, the attempts to try to put the thumb on the scale of a market on one side or the other have almost never worked, whether it's a wage floor, a price control, a tobacco subsidy, a tariff, for God's sakes. It always has unattended consequences, and these unattended consequences have worked out historically all over the world in reducing the supply of available rental housing. I lived in the capital of world rent control, Stockholm, and I'll tell you right now, it's almost impossible to find a place to live there. You have to go underground and do it with, with black money, basically what they call it over there, but it's, it's what you have to do. Rent control is a natural interruption in the market forces. You need the providers, you need the tenants, both sides need each other. If you say, you know what, food is so expensive, everybody needs to eat, and you tell the farmers or the fishermen, you, this is your cap, I don't care what your expenses are, you're going to sell at this cap, well, those products are going to go away, because you just, you need these incentives, you need to be able to move forward. To assume that everybody's doing it illegally or immorally or try to lay those kind of judgments on it is wrong. So what we're setting ourselves up for is what you guys really rail against a lot, corporate takeover, big-moneyed people, and I'll tell you why. If you had gone to the Radius Economic Forecast, there was a keynote speaker, they talked about this. He talked about when these things become so onerous, these properties become attractive than the multi-unit properties, apartment buildings, to big financial institutions, and what they can do is they can come in and they can buy them, and they can just wait out the two years, and empty the building out, because that empty building is actually worth more to them than the full one is, and they start all over again. I mean, that's an extreme scenario, but it has happened in other cities, and it's something that we don't want to step into, and we don't want to just willy-nilly do these, these kinds of ordinances that could cause this kind of thing. You know, it was said earlier, we represent our constituents, and that's exactly right. We represent all our constituents, not just a few. We represent everybody that lives in this town. We each have 90,000 bosses, not 15,000 that live in our district. We all work for 90,000 people all the time. I don't usually like to go this route, but if you're really convinced it's the right thing, because this is not the last bite at the rent control apple with all the rhetoric that I've heard out here before, we're going to be doing this again and again and again, and we all know that. Put it on the ballot, make a referendum out of it. Let's see what happens. I mean, you know Prop 33 went down for a reason, people understand it. You can't just take a market force and artificially tweak it and expect to have great things come out of it, maybe for short term, maybe for very few people, but if you talk to, as I did, the attorneys that represent Santa Monica, it's a disaster, and they spend $6 million a year running their program, and have fraud all over the place. I know two people that actually maintain their rental units down there, their rental, rent control units as crash pads, they live up here, and people that sublet them. You know, there's going to be ways to cheat any way you look at it, so you need to have a healthy relationship, you need to have a healthy rental stock, and you can't get more of a product if you cap the ability to have it have, have it make money. This is for a, for profit, this is a private, this is private property, these are for-profit enterprises. And I know a lot of landlords, and they're not all greed heads, a lot of them have tenants they've had for 30-plus years. I was a tenant for the first third of the time I lived in this town. I know that. So you can't just judge everybody and put them in one box. I think that's totally unfair. And like I said, Mike and I are as bigoted of tenant advocates as anybody else in this council. You know, I was an employer for 38 years, my employees needed a place to live, I needed my employees to live here, so does this organization, the city. We're all concerned about this. This is not the proper mechanism. So with that, if nobody else has any comments, I would entertain a motion on the issue.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Gutierrez has raised his hand.
Oh, okay, Mr. Gutierrez, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for everyone for attending and voicing your opinion about the issue. I'd like to echo my councilmember's comments, Ms. Santa Maria, about what it's like to go door-knocking in the community and ask them what they want you to do for them, and have this issue come up consistently. And, and I hear you, Mayor, that we're not just supposed to represent our district, but I've also walked for other councilmembers and other elected officials throughout the entire city, and this issue has been consistent. So as a, as a duly-elected representative of people and having firsthand experience, having them demand this of me, I will be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, and there's no more to comments, I will entertain a motion on the...
Great. Madam Clerk, this will be a lengthy motion, so let me know when you're ready.
Yeah, what's the staff recommendation?
Yeah, that, that was basically what I was going to encompass, but I can, perfect, thank you so much. So, thank you, Mayor. With that, I would like to make the motion to add the three uncodified intent sections from the January 2024 ordinance and the two-person memo, and that text was distributed to my colleagues and to the public. Also, then, the next part of the motion, the second bullet, so introduced and subsequently adopted by reading of title only, an ordinance of the council, and I won't read the rest since Madam Clerk already did. The third part to this motion would be to return this ordinance to the consent calendar next Tuesday, April 29th, for adoption, and provide the following direction to staff, and this would be for the third bullet, to return with a date and a, or actually, no, let me, let me rephrase that. Direct staff to return with an appeals processes, and just some research on that so that we can, we can take a look at this. And I add that because, in the, in the name of fairness and wanting to make sure that we are not casting blanket solutions, I think it's important that we do explore an appeals process, and so the direction would be to, for staff to research an appeals process and come back at a later date to evaluate that.
So that's the motion?
I am finished with the motion, yes.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, she's still awake. All right, very good. We have a motion, a second, we have the roll call, please.
All right, and please, please correct me as necessary. This is a motion by Councilmember Santa Maria, seconded by Councilmember Harmon, to add the three uncodified intent sections from January 2024 ordinance and two-person memo with the text distributed at the meeting, to introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only an ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara, amending municipal code by amending sections 26.50.040, 26.50.055, and 26.50.070, and the addition of section 26.50.090 relating to just cause evictions, and to direct staff to research and appeals process and return with a proposal at a later date.
Correct, thank you.
All right, one moment.
All right, may we have the roll call vote, please?
Okay, and this is a vote on that motion as just described. Councilmember Harmon.
Yes.
Councilmember Santa Maria.
Yes.
Councilmember Sneddon.
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Friedman is not present. Councilmember Gutierrez.
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan.
No.
And Mayor Ross.
No. All right, motion passes 4-2. Friedman has it. All right, very good, 5-2. We normally have councilmember engagements, but unless somebody's really have a burning desire to do that, I'd say we, we've had enough of a day already. Let's adjourn. Thank you. Thank you for your cooperation out there tonight, too, by the way.